Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the Planning Commission. It's Wednesday, May 12th, a little bit after 5:30 PM. Could I please request the roll call?
Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Herr Pastor?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
Commissioner Reese?
Here.
And Chair Landris.
Here. David Martin, I don't, bring yourself on screen and let's have the planning directors report.
Good evening, Commission. Nice to see you all. Waiting for this slide to come up. So our next meeting is May 19th. On that evening, we have the tax amendment and CUP for 849 Ocean Avenue. That's the Oceana Hotel where they're trying to amend the code to allow them to have a restaurant open to the public. They currently have a restaurant for guests only, and this amendment and CUP will allow the restaurant to be open to the public. June 2nd and June 3rd is the draft housing element before the commission. And then June 16th, 1633 26th Street is an office development. 710 Broadway is the Vons project at 7th and, well, on, running on Broadway between 7th and Lincoln. And then 1650 Euclid is another office project. City Council actions, April 27th, Boarding Commission review. Also that night, the council adopted the CWG recommendations. Also allowed two consecutive terms, a request third term for boards and commissions, enhance diverse representation, further outreach, and then investigate the legality of council liaison. So those actions were all included in the Boarding Commission review. And as the commission will recall, that's those items that the commission discussed a few weeks ago. And then upcoming council, May 26th, actually, May 25th and 26th is the budget study session. We don't know yet which night the Community Development Department will be before the commission, or excuse me, before the council, but if you recall the way they normally do that, it's broken up into different evenings for different departments. I will mention that in the budget recommendations, there are some positions that would assist the department in permit processing. So that would include an assistant planner, a permit specialist, and a senior plan check engineer. So that would, it wouldn't get us back to where we were before the budget cuts, but it would, it would help with some of the permit backlog that we're experiencing. And then also, there's a park planner position that's included in the recommendations. So again, those things will be going before the council and the budget study session, and we can let the commission know exactly what night, whether it's the 25th or 26th. Housing element update is ongoing. As I mentioned earlier, Planning Commission hearing on the draft on June 2nd and 3rd, and then council hearing on the draft on June 15th. And then we are moving into starting to reopen City Hall East. We started last Monday, May 3rd with appointment only. So currently, Monday and Wednesday, 8 to 12. So we, you know, kind of baby steps, but we're, we're starting there. It has been very successful so far, and we actually have a lot of appointments scheduled. We're really taking advantage of that. We do want to also, though, you know, encourage people to continue to use the online services that we've been able to develop over the last year or so. You know, we made really great strides at that. And certainly, if people want to or need to come down to City Hall and make an appointment, that's great. But we also are going to maintain those other services. So encourage everyone to do what works best for them. June 8th will be the first in-person council meeting in the council chambers. And then we're planning for possible June 16th in-person for the Planning Commission meetings. So that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions if I have.
I have some. Anyone else have questions? Okay, David, thank you. I have some questions about the, the budget and the in-person. With respect to the budget, could we add an agenda item the May 19th meeting so that the commission has an opportunity to express itself should it wish to do so? And then I'd like to request for, for the return in person. We can ally to Planning Commission announcements, but does any, before we get there, I just want to see if anybody else has questions. It's a kind of, it's sort of a combined update from me. My request for an agenda item is that I, and I don't want to get into it tonight, is that I would like to be absolutely certain that there is broad levels of comfort with a return in person for, for the 16th and for absolutely everyone who might be involved in any aspect of the hearings that are before us on the 16th. And so I think it would be appropriate for the commission to have an opportunity to discuss that before. In the context of the announcement, some of you may be aware that I've spent a fair amount of time personally working on Brown Act reform issues. And, and there are reforms pending. But for as long as the governor's orders are in place, and we've no reason to believe that they will go away on June 15th because the legislation to regularize them wouldn't, isn't likely to take effect before January 1st, the city does have quite a lot of flexibility. And so without going into a great deal of detail, since you've put it on the, you know, since we're going to agendize it, I will do want to be absolutely certain in the quasi judicial mode that we are respecting everyone's comfort level and ability to return or ability to be in person. There would nothing to give me greater pleasure than for us to be all together in the same room and to see one another safely. I think that would be wonderful, but I don't know what, if anything, are the health considerations for my six colleagues on the Planning Commission, for the staff members who will be responsible for presenting, and for the applicants and the, you know, members of the applicant's team for whom this may be brand new information. So if we could please agendize this on May 19th, perhaps the commission could have a role in making its own decision about the path to reopening, which I hope will be soon, but equally want it to be safe and especially want it to be equitable for all of us, though.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Yeah, and we welcome the commission's input on, on that issue. So as we said, we, we have it down as tentative. It's, it's possible as, you know, with council back in the chambers, but we're certainly anxious to talk to the commission and get your input on what would be best.
And my understanding is that you're gonna, that there will be remote comment provisions, no matter what happens. So I'm, I'm assured that the public will have some form of access from home or work, but I do, I do want to make sure we cover the other bases. Commissioner Pastor?
In terms, has it been decided yet what time we would start if we meet in person? Because we used to start at 7:00 PM, right? And now we've been starting at 5:30. So has that been changed?
I haven't heard any details on that. I think I don't know if we got to that level of planning yet.
I mean, I think I, I, I would assume we would go back to our regular 7 o'clock, but I think we can discuss that. It, it's, you know, because it would involve obviously updating the rules of order and what, what have you. So, you know, I think as we're saying, we're, we're planning for it because with the governor's announcement, you know, of the lifting of safer at home and, or the lifting of the tier system on June 15th, I think we're a little uncertain as to what that, you know, what becomes of that or what that is replaced with, which is why, but you know, so we, we have to plan for the eventuality, whenever that may be, whether it's Tuesday, Thursday, or it's a little later. I think we're just, we're being asked to plan for it. And we'll certainly reach out to the commissioners because there, there are definitely logistical, you know, questions that we have for the commission as well. But certainly, we can discuss start time as part of your agenda discussion.
I think it's important that the public, the members of the public and all of us be aware, and I've, admittedly, I've put more time into this than, than some folks, that the ending, that whatever might happen on June 15th with respect to the tiers is not the same thing as the public health emergency orders that will continue to, under which the governor will continue to have executive authority and will continue to limit capacity in certain locations. And I would also remind everyone that with the vaccines still under emergency youth authorization and with many of us still having children at home who are not eligible for vaccine, that changed for 12 to 15-year-olds, but it is not expected to change for under 12-year-olds for quite a number of months, that we do need to be sensitive and we need to make decisions that are both in the best interest of the public, but also equitable with respect to folks who still, for whatever reason, actually are or strongly feel that, that they're being in, in a room for a long period of time might be, might present a health risk. So I think having the conversation on the 19th will enable a more robust discussion with all stakeholders. And I do hope that we will hear from staff. I'm assuming that there are some labor issues there which are way above our pay grade, but I think we need to, I think we need to have it out before we, before we lock on to a decision.
Right.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Okay, great. So let us, let us keep going. We're heading toward our, 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 our actual agenda here. Any other announcements before we? Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, just letting people know that the Urban Forest Task Force, which has not met in well over a year, will be holding a virtual meeting on May 26th. So for anyone interested in urban forestry issues, tune into that.
Great. And, and it was preserved. The Urban Forest Task Force is still alive after the boards and commissions meeting. So that's, that was, it's good for us to have been heated on that. That's great. Okay, we have no minutes. We have no statements of official action. Let us move forward now to the consent calendar. Item 8A, 420 Broadway, 21 ENT 0048, a CUP, conditional use permit for the, for the sale of alcohol at Target. The applicant is Target, the property owner is 420 Broadway LLC. Are there any ex parte disclosures? The none. There are no callers for public comment. Is there anyone who wants to pull this from the consent calendar? Commissioner Raskin?
I don't want to pull it. I do want to make a statement with respect to the motion, but I do want to disclose that I confer with Judy Brant by email regarding this item.
Okay. Let's see if we can, yeah, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. I've raised this question before, which is, you know, we keep handing out these alcohol permits in effect, but we don't really know when we're crossing a line. And we've given out too many or too few, for that matter. And it's always a very kind of fuzzy, squishy data points here, too many, too little, you know? And I wish we had a little more solid footing to make these decisions, which either will appear arbitrary on one side or discriminatory on the other. So I want to know what other people think about this and our role in this, in this alcohol situation.
Or would you like to pull the item from consent?
Well, I'd like to hear what other people think, yes. In that case, we would pull it. I, I don't necessarily feel we should apply it to this, our discussion to this item, but I do feel we need to have that discussion.
Okay, well, let's, for the sake of procedure, pull the item from consent. Yeah?
Do we have to vote to do that?
No, there's no required vote.
No, so we're off consent. Is there, is there a motion to waive the staff report?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the staff.
Is there a second? Great. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landris.
Yes. Great. So we've waived the staff report on that. I guess we, do we need to hear from the applicant at this point? Or can we proceed to?
The applicant has an opportunity to do so since this has been pulled off your consent, but they are not required, so it's their determination.
Okay, if the applicant really wants, um, I, they're welcome to be heard, but I think the commission.
Are they not asked to make the presentation?
Definitely.
Perhaps if anybody has questions for the applicant, the applicant could be available with a question?
Sure. This is Beth Abalothia. I'm representing Target with respect to this application. I'd be happy to make a presentation if it's the commission's desire, but based on the comments so far, I'd also be happy to just be available for any questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant? I don't see any, and there's no public comment. Are we able to go straight to discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Herr Fonda Bernardi, do you want to, do you want to, you wanted to raise a question, so.
Yeah, I question, as I've stated before, is there aren't very many clear data points or considerations that we can really point to in making these determinations. So we either have to listen to public input and almost take a vote by public input, or we sort of mind meld it together and just say yea, no, or maybe. And so I'm asking for a little more, a little more in-depth discussion here.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Yes, I have something. Yes, I, I have, I have two thoughts about this project. One is it's not a bar, it's a supermarket, actually, you know, a superstore with the market in it. The people are not going to be in the store in the parking lot presumably drinking. They're going to be buying alcohol to take home. This is a little different from a bar. The other thought is, I mean, we, don't we always contact the police department to see if they have a problem?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we, we do. I also want to clarify the, the ABC process on this. So what the ABC does is when they look at an alcohol license that's being issued, they'll, they'll, they'll take a look at where the liquor licenses in that particular census tract. And if there's an undue concentration of alcohol license licenses, you know, then they require what's called a letter of public convenience and necessity. It's kind of an extra step they require from the city. And that's sort of, you know, that's a step that ABC does in terms of looking at concentrations of alcohol licenses. But yes, Commissioner Lambert, we also do route these sorts of applications to the police department for, for their comment and review as well.
And Jing, is there any definition of an undue concentration? Like, I think, sorry, Mario, that's what you're asking, right? Like.
Well, essentially, yeah.
It's a, it's an, it's an ABC determination. If there's, we're certainly happy to look into that and, and get you that information as a follow-up.
It was not clear to me from the, from the STOA or the, or the staff report whether there would be any, other than the hours of sale, whether there would be any limitations on sales such as, you know, single, single use, not single use, but like one can of beer as opposed to a six-pack. And I'm not necessarily inclined to be looking for that kind of a restriction. But I'm wondering what the, if we can just sort of review for the, for the record, should there be some kind of observable adverse effect? You know, what are the options available to the city? They may not be available to the planning commission, or they may be. But, you know, what are the, at, at what point would there be an opportunity for community members or others to say, hey, you know what? This isn't really working, or we need to make some changes?
With any CUP, you know, you don't, we, we don't have it recommended here because I think generally it's, I think we've, I've heard the commission maybe have that concern with a standalone liquor store or a convenience market or what have you. This is something that's, you know, obviously ancillary to a larger retail use, not similar to alcohol for sale in a grocery, you know, in, in a grocery store or the like. So, you know, there wasn't, I think we viewed it through that lens. However, if there was concern from the commission, you, you have the option, as with all CUPs, to, you know, have a kind of a one-year monitoring report to see how things are going that, and, and, you know, if, if there have been enforcement issues or what have you. We have the option to bring that back to the commission for a hearing to add additional operational conditions.
Well, I don't think I'm hearing anything that's swaying in one way or the other. If we're really only going to look at undue concentrations by, on the standard by, developed by the ABC, then I guess that's the only metric we have. I understand it's a market and it's a, you know, it's a convenience for the high-density housing in that immediate area presumably, so that would be a benefit. And by that, I mean a walking distance to them, which is always good. So again, I don't see an objection here. I'm just trying to understand where we are in the overall process.
Commissioner Raskin?
A lot of the inherent parts of the CUP process is that we have to make findings that issuing this, this discretionary permit is not going to be detrimental to public health, welfare, and safety. You know, if, if there was substantial evidence in the record that that was the case, then I would be swayed. I'm not seeing that here, but that's, that's one of the safeguards that's a, a part of this process. And at some point, I, I do want to make another unrelated statement for the record. I, I don't know if that's a good time since I have a floor.
Now's the time to say it.
Yeah. I was definitely concerned by the evidence that we saw on the record of trucks that were going down the wrong way on the alleyway between 4th and 5th. I, I corresponded with a planner by email, and he confirmed that there is a, I always forget the acronyms, the PLOT, whatever, or the Parking and Loading Plan, that has trucks going through the parking lot on 5th Street and backing into the loading dock. But I was assured that staff would be paying close attention to that issue and Jordan personally will be keeping watch for lie on potential violations of that and other traffic issues on the alleyway. So with that, I, I'm prepared to move this item, but I'll, I'll defer to the chair.
Go for it.
I'll, I'll move this item.
This is our item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Raskin. Can I ask if you're not, if you're not speaking, please mute your microphones. I'm, I'm hearing some extraneous noise, so if we could, so it's moved by Commissioner Raskin, seconded by Commissioner Lambert. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes. You told me to mute my microphone and then I wasn't ready.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Landris.
Yes. Okay. And Nina, I would never try to mute you. I just heard. I just heard voices and wasn't sure who they were. Let us now turn to the next item on our agenda. We have no public hearings tonight. We have item, let's see, we have item 10A, which is our update and discussion of direction received from the City Council on March 30th with the housing element update and recommended approaches for the draft housing element. I believe we will hear from staff. I would like to say something at the outset by way of framing the conversation, if you will permit me. I want to express my appreciation to staff for adding this check-in process with us ahead of the submission on June 2nd. I know that it's added a degree of work, and I also know that it's added a degree of risk because you're sharing a wide range of options that are available to us. And, you know, there may be some wide range of opinions about the various options that are before us. This is an opportunity for us and for the three people who did pre-register to speak and the folks who wrote in to give really valuable input. And so I want to thank the staff for putting it out there. I want to remind everyone that this is the equivalent of opening the oven while the cake is baking and testing. It's like we're sticking the toothpick into the cake and we're seeing if it's baked. And some people might think it's overcooked, some people might think it's still raw. But at the end of the end of the day, the cake is going to be presented to us on June 2nd, and we're going to discuss it on June 3rd, and it's going to be presented to council on June 15th. And, but in the meantime, I just want to invite everyone to enter into the conversation with that understanding in mind. If it's not the consistency you quite want, come with suggestions for how to get there. I also want to thank Commissioner Fonda Bonardi, who wrote to me earlier pointing out that there were some areas of conversation that were not yet included in the staff report. And I know he has a list, and I imagine that others of you have lists as well as do I. So I want to make sure before we launch in our discussions, after we hear from the staff, before we hear from the public, if there are additional subjects broadly understood that you would like to make sure that we cover tonight in our discussions so that there's an opportunity to give input to staff. So with that, let us turn it over to Jing, and let's see where we are.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, for that introduction, and very much appreciate framing the discussion tonight. I do want to, before we begin, acknowledge the housing team who's been working feverishly, literally around the clock, and we have a target to get the draft element out next Friday. We sincerely hope to meet it, but it may be a day or two after that, so I just want to preview that. Tonight is a progress update. You know, we are, as you indicated, literally still making the cake. So, you know, I think we are trying to put forth as concrete as possible things that we know now, recognizing that we are, a lot of the stuff is still in the works. I have a couple of updates or corrections from the staff report tonight that I'll go through in the presentation because we literally got just, you know, the works happening about an hour ago. You know, we got more information and updates on that, so we'll try and walk you through it. So with that, let me go ahead and share my screen. So, purpose of tonight's meeting, as I indicated, is to review council's direction. You know, that's really what we're following from their March 30th meeting. Obviously, the planning commission, before that, and your recommendation was forwarded to the council for their consideration. It was also reviewed by the Housing Commission and Rent Control Board subsequent to the council meeting. Unfortunately, due to the time crunch, we just weren't, we're not able to get to them before those meetings. And you see the seven key topics there. These were born from the, from the direction from council, and we also were trying to meld in some follow-up items from the March 16th and 17th meetings that the planning commission held. Just to remind everybody, council had a discussion on the draft concepts at their March 30th meeting, and you can see there that they gave eight pieces of direction to the staff with respect to preparing a compliant housing element to prioritize 100% affordable housing on city-owned land. They selected quote-unquote Option B. That was the option that has sort of a more broader distribution of housing sites, but with consideration of zoning changes necessary to incentivize housing. In those commercial areas, they directed pursuing 100% affordable housing overlay, but looking at accepting areas that are environmental justice areas or previously redlined zones. They directed exploring opportunities for affordable homeownership and the transition from renters to owners. Explore ADU incentives in R1 areas, and you restricted ADUs. Explore options to densify areas that historically have excluded diverse populations in affordable housing. This was really around a very sort of broad, general theme of their discussion in terms of increasing equitable access to all Santa Monica neighborhoods. And then finally, you can see related to that promoting diversity and inclusion in every neighborhood in Santa Monica. As I indicated, subsequent to the council meetings, the housing, we presented to the Housing Commission, and the Housing Commission largely, I haven't listed all of their motions here because they made several, but they largely agreed with the recommendations. However, there were two that we wanted to highlight for the commission in terms of, they strongly supported incentives for moderate-income housing. Basically, they wanted similar incentives for 80% AMI housing and moderate to be basically the same. And then they also raised a point with respect to excluding areas from the affordable housing overlay that, you know, to consider other metrics. And we'll talk through, we have some new maps, I think, to talk through the affordable housing overlay and what that means in reality. The Rent Control Board also had a discussion, and they were, had five points here that came out of that meeting in terms of concern about insufficient resources that the city is devoting to enforcement for short-term rentals and corporate rentals. They were very concerned about creating homeownership opportunities from existing rental stock. They have, throughout the process, they have maintained concern about the adverse impact of rehab projects undertaken by landlords on tenants that are in those units. And they were not supportive of incentives for moderate-income housing. Part of that was, you know, they felt that moderate-income housing was market-rate housing, so they didn't feel like it needed to be incentivized. And they had a comment with respect to Goal Six in the housing element update as to whether it captured all protected classes. So that's something that we are following up on. So starting with the first topic about where housing should be located, this is really more of a progress update. So just a reminder to everyone what Option B was. It was kind of this more distributed model, and the whole idea was to activate housing potential in areas that have historically not accommodated housing in the past. So you can see here these sort of yellow blobby areas around Maine and Montana, Ocean Park, the office campus zone, and the industrial conservation. And this was, you know, really viewed through the affirmatively furthering fair housing mandate. This is a follow-up to a request from the commission to overlay those areas to units that are at risk of loss or conversion. You can see there, most of these areas, you know, don't directly overlay any of those parcels. And in terms of incentivizing housing in those yellow areas, the approach, you know, is what we would be doing, that the steps that would need to be taken and would be programs that are added to the housing element is really zoning changes to add multi-unit housing as a permitted use in these zones that currently prohibit housing. And also to study what incentives, development incentives are necessary to make housing competitive to commercial projects. And I think that's primarily looking at neighborhood commercial zones where the FARs are quite low across the board. The second section here is with respect to the density bonus structure. This is a bit of a long section, and we are going to try and walk you through a fairly complicated topic. So to start with, let's take a look at the state density bonus table. So this is taken from the Government Code section. We recognize as we jump into this that, you know, there are probably varying degrees of familiarity with how state density bonus law works. So basically, the idea is that state density bonus law, it's codified in Government Code Section 65915, and it requires cities to provide a density bonus if applicants provide established percentages of onsite affordable housing. There's also a concept called incentives and concessions. I'll talk about that in a following slide, but it also allows applicants to request essentially deviations from codified development standards in order to support onsite affordable housing. That is in addition to the bonus. So this is just one of the tables that is in the Government Code. We chose this one because it's the one that results in the largest bonus. So this is the table for very low-income units. And you can see that the progression there from 5% through 15%, and then the density bonus increases by increments of 2.5%. I pointed out there in the orange rectangle, 10%, very low income is the current HPP minimum requirement. So any market-rate housing project, that is the least amount of affordable housing units that you must provide in that project. And you can see there that it translates with 32.5% density bonus. And we will kind of come back to those, what that means in the slides in this section. So as we looked at creating, kind of integrating the state density bonus law into our existing loose, or excuse me, land-use tier system, it's helpful to start with just, you know, the foundational concepts. One of the things about density, obviously, is that in our commercial zones, we do not have measures of density. We have a measure called FAR. FAR is not density. It creates a building envelope. It's a measure of development potential. And state density bonus law does not set out any particular way in how you do that. You know, we looked at here, cities, every city does it a little bit differently in terms of how this is applied. What we're proposing as part of this update is to do basically a straight application. So for example, if I had a 1.0 FAR, and you can see I had a project at 10% very low income, you know, I would just, in our proposal, we would just add 32.5% to that 1.0. So just do a straight FAR increase on there. It seems the simplest thing to do. And that would apply to the Tier 1 FAR and only to the residential portion of the FAR. And as I noted in that first slide, the applicants can still request incentives and concessions as allowed under state density bonus law. And our proposal is to use the list of modifications and waivers in the zoning code as a starting point for that. So if I can move on to the next slide here. So given those foundational concepts, what are some possible approaches that would be consistent with council's direction? So as we reviewed in the first slide, council directed us to essentially, you know, look at preparing a compliant housing element, but, you know, not something that would result in, you know, something that would drastically change the form of the city. So, you know, with that, with that direction, you know, there's really kind of two approaches. One would be, you know, you could lower the minimum HPP requirements to align with our existing FARs, or you could increase FARs to support minimum HPP requirements. So we've done some feasibility testing around that. And I think on that matter of feasibility, it does matter. Because when we consider the practical impact of how the incentives and concessions that allowance, how it works together with the bonus under state density bonus law, you can see there if the city establishes FARs that do not accommodate the highest affordable levels in density bonus law. So remember that 15% very low income, that is the highest amount of affordable housing in the tables. This means that applicants can request incentives and concessions that may include heightened FARs, part of those incentives and concessions in order to support the onsite affordable housing. So if we don't establish FARs that can support, you know, those inclusionary requirements, the applicants have the option to request incentives and concessions in order to support that. So, you know, you may end up with those higher heights in FARs anyways. And you can see that table on the right shows the corresponding amount of incentives and concessions a project would be allowed to, an applicant would be allowed to request based on the percentage of affordable. So again, if you see an applicant did 10% VLI, that stands for very low income. That's what's in the city's HPP right now is the minimum amount of affordable housing onsite. A project that did that could request two incentives or concessions under state density bonus law in addition to any bonus that the state density bonus table allows them. So the next step in that is, you know, we've established that foundational concept, the options that we could go down. So what we looked at is essentially these conceptual options of how we could integrate density bonus structure. So we provided sort of two, three scenarios here. So we have a scenario one, which is really the original concept that was presented in mid-March to the Planning Commission. I want to note that that's not what council recommended. It is just being, we're providing that for reference, you know, for comparison purposes. And then really, the two scenarios, Scenario 2A and 2B, really are reflective of council's direction to increase, you know, to look at, you know, what would it take to support our existing HPP requirements? And what we found in some of our preliminary testing is that the FARs do need to be increased across the board to support existing HPP. And then you can see the variations on council's direction is, you know, do we keep Tier 2 the same? Or do we incentivize Tier 2? You know, that is, do we make Tier 2 higher than our new Tier 1? And you can see the trade-offs there in terms of if there was a move to just increase Tier 1 and keep Tier 2 the same and basically not change the existing Tier 2 FARs, you likely would only see Tier 1 projects with possible incentive and concession requests to, you know, get towards projects that can support that onsite affordable housing. Scenario 2B, you know, in that case, you might benefit from additional community benefits for Tier 2. And as you can see there, remember I talked about the incentives and concessions that applicants can request. You know, the proposal here is to have a ministerial incentive concession menu based on the modifications and waivers chapter of the zoning ordinance. So that's Chapter 9.43. It seemed that's something that's already baked into our code. We could establish that as the starting point. However, it doesn't mean that applicants will be limited only to that menu. They could be allowed to request others that are not on the menu. So let's run through these in greater detail. So you can see here in Scenario 1, again, this is the original draft concept from March, mid-March. And again, this is for reference. And if you recall at that time, our key question, you know, what is the FAR necessary to support these target HPP minimums? And so at that point, you know, we were looking at 15% VLI for Tier 1 with onsite housing, and then 20% with units kind of distributed across all income categories at the Tier 2 level. And you can see there that the sort of takeaway is that, you know, you really need substantially increased FARs to support 15% VLI relative to existing Tier 1 FARs. You can see there the mixed-use Boulevard Low, mixed-use Boulevard, General Commercial, Bergamot Transit Village. In all those cases, the new Tier 1 FAR to support, that percentage of inclusionary would be higher than the existing Tier 2 FAR. And then the Transit Adjacent District within the downtown is the only district where the new Tier 1 would fall under current Tier 2 requirements. So that was just giving a sense as to how that relates to existing standards. And the goal here was to try and integrate state density bonus law with our local tier system in a transparent and consistent way with the intention of reducing, you know, those requests for incentives and concessions that sort of introduce a measure of uncertainty into the land use process because it really, you know, is considered on a case-by-case basis. So that was our first run, you know, that we did in March. Following council's direction, we've looked at these variations on this scenario of, you know, what if, we looked at sort of a minimal increase. So the first scenario that we looked at was, you know, what if we added a 50% bonus to, a 50% increase basically to existing Tier 1 FAR? The idea there was to match, you know, the maximum bonus in state density bonus law. And so we tested that, and you can see... And you can see when we added 50% to existing Tier 1 FARs, Mixed Use Boulevard Low and General Commercial, Lincoln would be feasible at the 7% VLI units. And this was, so you can see this was a different analysis than what we did in March. The idea here was to set the FAR and then figure out what is the supportable inclusionary amounts. And so you can see there MUBL and GC feasible at 7% VLI. Again, I want to emphasize these are preliminary findings. You know, we're working pretty fast, so these are certainly subject to changes as we go along. Downtown and Bergamot Transit Village feasible at 9% and 14% respectively at new Tier 1. And then looking at housing projects in the Mixed Use Boulevard, Pico, Main Ocean Park Boulevard, Montana are not likely at the new Tier 1 FAR even with 100% market rate units. So those could not support any inclusionary units at that new Tier 1 FAR. So that's the 50% increase over existing Tier 1. Some takeaways out of this, the 50% increase in FAR, you know, as you remember from that density bonus table, translates to 15% very low income in state density bonus law. The preliminary findings when we did this run, basically, and you can see the results there, they show that the new Tier 1 could not support that level of inclusionary. You can see none of these, none of these models that were run here can support that 15% VLI. And because the existing Tier 2 remains, you know, it's unlikely Tier 2 projects would proceed. And, you know, the other thing is, you know, existing FARs are obviously not able to support the 100% market rate for the Tier 1, existing Tier 1 FARs. Scenario 2B, so this is support the existing HPP. So, you know, what is the, so taking a look, so this is again doing the analysis back to the other way. So Scenario 2A was looking at establishing the FARs. What is the HPP that could be supported? And then Scenario 2B is, okay, what if we establish, you know, 10% VLI, which is our existing HPP? What is the FAR necessary to support that? And we looked at then, you know, trying to incentivize Tier 2 in this respect. So, you know, the inclusionary was increased to 15% to see, you know, what FAR would support that amount of inclusionary. And you can see there that the 10% translates to MUBL, Mixed Use Boulevard Low, Mixed Use Boulevard, General Commercial, and Bergamot Transit Village. All support, the new Tier 1 FAR would be higher than the existing Tier 2 FARs. And Transit Adjacent is the only district where the new Tier 1 FAR falls under the current Tier 2 requirements. So pretty similar to the testing that was done for our original concepts, but you know, just like 5% lower, but the results were relatively similar. And the takeaways here, you can see that 10% VLI translates to a 32.5% increase in FAR in state density bonus law in that table. But our preliminary findings are showing that state density bonus, like the bonus afforded there, doesn't support inclusionary in Santa Monica. So, you know, the FARs, if we wanted to have 10% VLI, you know, it would be at an FAR that is more than 32.5% above existing Tier 1 models. FAR increase in all zones is necessary to support this minimum HPP of 10%. And I think the other thing that was interesting was that, you know, it's not that big a difference in FARs to support 10% versus 15%. You know, so there's, you know, something to consider there, you know, as we're looking at establishing, you know, what incentives will be available for housing in these zones. So that's an overview of the scenarios, you know, and how they ended up in our preliminary testing. So you see in this table in your staff report, we applied that concept or those concepts to just one example that we were able to pull together for Mixed Use Boulevard Low. So you can just see in real numbers, you know, what that means. So this table is showing Mixed Use Boulevard is really 2.27. So that's a difference you see there. So the numbers that are different from your staff report are in green. And you can see the difference in FARs as you move through the original draft concept through the, you know, Scenario A and Scenario B. And I think that's where you see, Scenario A, recall, is, you know, looking at a Tier 1 with onsite affordable housing, you know, what would it take to support 10%? And same in Scenario B, you can see that it's not a big difference between Tier 1 and Tier 2, just support 10% versus 15%. It's relatively the same FAR for this particular zone. We had a request to also convert this into estimated number of units. So this is, again, I want to emphasize, very approximate estimates for number of units. So this is basically this table, the FAR converted to an estimated number of units based on a set of assumptions with respect to unit size and mix. And you can see the differences there in the number of units. Again, Scenario A being the one that doesn't have Tier 2 being incentivized, so that's why the number is lower for Tier 2. And Scenario B is, you know, that 10% VLI and incentivizing Tier 2. And you can see the differences in the number of units that are reduced relative to the original draft concept that was presented in mid-March. And then obviously the differences with what could potentially come out of existing FARs for both Tier 1 and Tier 2, and then we've also added an affordable housing in that. So I think to kind of summarize, you know, again, using that MUBL example to illustrate the 10% VLI project at 2.27 FAR, that's higher than state density bonus law. That's what STBL stands for. And I think at that point, I think what we wanted to use this example to illustrate is really the choices, you know, that are presented to the applicant as they go down this road and, you know, implications it has for the city. You know, if an applicant chooses 10% very low income, you know, and we establish an FAR at 2.27 that's higher than state density bonus law, it's possible because we are establishing that our minimum HPP at 10% and it's lower than, you recall that first table, 15% was sort of like the highest amount of inclusionary housing percentage on that table. So an applicant could, in theory, say, well, you know, I would like to do more onsite housing to get more bonus. So an applicant could choose the 15% onsite, for example, and then, you know, would be afforded the 50% density bonus. But as you recall, you know, we've looked at the testing, and even with a 50% density bonus, you know, it does not appear that the FARs would be able to support 15% VLI in Santa Monica. So in that situation, then the applicant could then request incentives and concessions to increase their FAR. I think we just wanted to walk you through a concrete example and understand, like, those are the choices available, and that's what is allowed under state law, just to be able to more clearly illustrate those points. And I think implications, you know, policy implications for the city, you can see kind of the green boxes. I think we've attempted to try and boil it down in terms of, you know, the city has choices to establish clearly known standards, but, you know, it may mean higher FARs that, you know, essentially mean that, you know, the FARs that are codified in our zoning ordinance, lend themselves to projects that are, you know, likely for housing to happen. And that provides, you know, more measure of local control. You know, or the city might establish potentially, you know, not sort of higher standards, but maybe lesser standards, but still feasible. But, you know, in those situations, because of variations, you know, in land costs throughout the city and just different individual circumstances, you know, it may reduce the predictability of the final project outcome because of the right of the applicant to request these incentives and concessions to support the onsite affordable housing. And, you know, again, looking at, illustrating it through this MUBL example, and that's, you know, ultimately less transparency, less predictability, less control over that process. So I think that brings us to the end of the density bonus section. But we can certainly, I'm sure you'll have questions and we can come back to this. But, you know, we wanted to basically walk you through that progression of what the proposed structure would be and through this example. Moving on now to our third section on the affordable housing overlay. So before we jump into this, I thought it would be helpful just to look at a base map here in terms of where these environmental justice areas are. So you can see here the areas that are not kind of shaded in green, you know, largely these large chunks in the middle of the city and then out by the airport. However, you know, they are overlaid by state density bonus law for 100% affordable housing. So you can see this map, you know, basically requires that the city offer unlimited density, no minimum parking requirements, extra three stories of 33 for 100% affordable housing in all of the, you know, the blob areas you see here in the blue. So we wanted to just graphically illustrate what that looks like in terms of number of stories. You can see there, this is a rough translation. You know, we just basically added 33 feet to the height and then made some assumptions about floor-to-floor height to come up with this number. The dark green is the highest at nine to 11 stories. And the lighter green is the lowest at six stories. You know, as we discussed before, areas that are covered, that are currently R1 zone are not impacted by this because housing is not a, is currently not a permitted use. So the idea of the affordable housing overlay would be to apply these standards to the remainder of the city, so to the pink, essentially, you know, sort of filling in the rest of the gaps outside of those, of those other areas. In terms of moderate, the affordable housing overlay for moderate income housing, there certainly are choices here because state density bonus law doesn't apply to moderate income housing projects. There's not really any program that addresses that. So the housing element proposal, as you recall from the draft concepts, was to apply, you know, open up state density bonus law, those, and create kind of a local program for moderate income housing, you know, providing a similar increase in three stories of 33 feet instead of an unlimited density, you know, in this case, proposal would be like a 50% density bonus above base FARs, no minimum parking requirements in order to support moderate income housing. And I think more importantly, I think, you know, what we've heard in talking to some of these providers is maybe to consider flexibility for microunits with significant common area amenities. So essentially looking at, you know, whether we could have flexibility in our unit mix requirements in order to support moderate income housing. Moving into Section 5, this is, we're going to review the priority sites for affordable housing. So this is an area where we're looking at city-owned sites and parking lots of our religious congregations. For city-owned sites, I won't review the whole table, which is in your staff report, but really this is just a summary of the approaches that we're taking to assess the capacity for city-owned sites. There are quite a few considerations. Every site is a little bit different. So what we're attempting to do as an approach is to, you know, look at prioritizing the, of the priority sites, the largest available sites, and to understand their constraints. So that is the Fortin Arizona site, the Art Center, Bergamot Art Center, and the parking lots on Main Street. And HRNA has been helping us kind of understand the funding considerations with respect to that and, you know, how it has implications for, you know, the amount of affordable housing that, you know, we could see on those properties, even assuming free land and the like. And, you know, we're working through some development assumptions as well with the architects on the team in terms of assuming probably no higher than 80 feet. That takes into account, you know, a change in construction type, most importantly, and with affordable housing, managed costs. So our hope is to, you know, come back with information for you and for the council just to understand, you know, what these potential constraints are, both from a funding perspective, but also sort of local ones. You know, just as an example, for example, like the Main Street parking lots, you know, if you wanted to redevelop those lots, you know, they obviously are well-used in terms of supporting Main Street businesses used by customers from Main Street, used by visitors to the, obviously, the postal commission would, you know, likely require the replacement of those parking spaces. So those have, you know, implications with respect to, you know, the cost of doing a project on that site. And, you know, it informs whether it, you know, could we do this only with public assistance? You know, if it was just free land, it was just only 100% affordable housing? Or do we have to consider other uses to support that? Council did direct, you know, to look at, for the Art Center, for example, to make sure that, you know, artist uses were considered. And they also asked us to look at, I think, by its very nature, you know, not 100% of the floor area would be for 100% affordable housing. If there was, perhaps there's a statement in the staff report that may have, that you may have found confusing with respect to, I'm trying to find here, it's on page 6 of your staff report in that paragraph of city-owned sites. Wanted to point out that that was, you know, perhaps could be written clearer in terms of, it seems to suggest that we were looking only at 50% of the floor for affordable housing, you know, given council's direction. That's not the case. We're looking at prioritizing it and trying to understand, you know, how much affordable housing could be supported on these, on these city-owned sites, really for the purposes of, you know, we're having to create the draft SSI and, you know, calculate capacity for these sites. An update on other discussions we've been having. So thank you to Chair Landris for helping us connect with the Interfaith Council. We had a very good discussion with the group in terms of looking at parking lots related to religious congregations. There was pretty strong interest from organizations in pursuing housing opportunities. Some of them have already been in discussions with affordable housing providers on their surface parking lots, you know, but I think they also presented the realities for them. You know, they were affected by the economic impacts of COVID as well. You know, so they're having to consider financial feasibility for their congregations. And they did raise, you know, a question as to whether market rate units could be considered in support of affordable housing. I think we, you know, we asked them to follow up and, you know, if they had additional information, you know, as they kind of work through different scenarios to help inform this policymaking. You know, we're trying to further understand, you know, what that picture looks like. It is definitely a unique opportunity to introduce equitable housing access to all neighborhoods, given that most of these churches are located in residential neighborhoods. They have these surface parking lots. You know, they are natural community partners in this. And, you know, they, I think we generally heard that there was an interest in ensuring that they replace the parking in some way, you know, for their congregations. But I think they liked hearing the flexibility that, you know, they don't necessarily have to. You know, so that was, you know, a helpful conversation. And we've had other conversations with other institutional landowners, such as Little District and UCLA. And also, not ourselves directly, but other city staff have been having ongoing conversations with the DMV regarding the DMV site. It doesn't look quite like, you know, it's something that would happen in this cycle, that, you know, the conversations are happening with the assessment of our legislative representatives with respect to the DMV site. The next section here is regarding densifying R1 zones. And this was something that council directed us to look at. So, you know, as an initial approach here, I guess we'll just, you know, kind of go through it as that we'd be looking at lots of at least 7,500 square feet that was in response to some council concern that are not adversely impacted areas that have lots that are perhaps too small to accommodate this, you know, these ideas of, you know, potential densification of it. And, you know, this is work that is really in progress. We just, you know, started to kind of, you know, really in progress on it. So you can see the, our approach, you know, as far as I can offer here is in terms of our questions, understanding how many units can fit within the existing R1 envelope, accounting for architectural and financial feasibility. And then our second question says really that the other scenario is how many units are needed to support at least one inclusionary affordable housing unit on an average 7,500 square foot lot? So, you know, it's been, I think in some of the initial steps that HRNA has taken, I think one thing that's jumped out at us is that the land cost in R1 is actually pretty high. And just overall, you know, just buying property is high, even higher than multi-unit property in multi-unit zones in some cases. And so that will definitely be affecting the analysis. We also have the architects on the team helping create some context diagrams. This is obviously something. create some context diagrams. This is obviously something quite different for the city, you know, so we want them to be able to help us try to visualize, you know, what that looks like, what this might look like in context to inform decision-making. And then looking at homeownership, exploring opportunities for affordable homeownership. We have been looking at at this topic, you know, looking at, talking with our colleagues in the Housing Division Rent Control Board, City Attorney's Office, essentially staff that, you know, have, were involved in Torca and are still dealing with with its ongoing ongoing issues to understand that that program as it's something that was raised during the council meetings. But I think, you know, kind of taking a step back at understanding, you know, what affordable homeownership means. If we're talking about, you know, having homeownership that is de-restricted in some way, that's price restricted, it does raise sort of this fundamental conflict of, you know, you have the benefit of long-term affordability for that homeowner, but, you know, that person may naturally, like, you know, anyone who might own a home, I mean, it's it's a step to, you know, building equity, building, you know, wealth for for their family. And that opportunity may not exist here if it's, you know, de-restricted affordable ownership housing. Santa Monica has very, very high land costs and it, you know, increases the housing prices. So, you know, right now, the the only avenue for affordable homeownership is through the Affordable Housing Production Program and the production of moderate income units through the EHPP. And, you know, we've heard through the Housing Division, that there have been a handful of of projects that have successfully done this. But, you know, it can be challenging to 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 find qualified buyers, or I would say the pool of buyers, you know, is not as large as it would be if it was if it was market rate. Looking at the idea of like, would something like a Torca 2.0 work? That's the Tenant Ownership Rights Charter Amendment that was put into place by voters in 1984, I believe. And this was an area that the Rent Control Board had very, very strong objections to. We, as I said, we spoke with our colleagues in other divisions who who are dealing with this program. I think overall, there's a concern that, you know, the circumstances that brought about the first Torca are very, very different, you know, than than today. The real estate economics are substantially different today than they than they were back then. You know, the Ellis Act wasn't yet in effect. Costa-Hawkins, you know, wasn't in the picture. So, you know, what we see today compared to that time is, I think, there's an overall concern with 73% of rent control units having already converted to market rents. There's concern that, you know, converting rental stock to ownership stock, you know, benefits maybe that tenant or that tenant who's able to afford it, able to participate. You know, maybe they're able to move on, but it sort of brings that unit into a higher cost or ownership unit. It overall kind of increases housing stock and it's at the expense of the removal of of permanent rent rent control housing stock that might be the the entry for housing for a lot of people in the city. As you heard me, the key real estate economics have changed pretty significantly. At the time of the original Torca, the city was able, actually able to offer loans to participating tenants. It's very unlikely that would be the case today, given how how expensive things have gotten in Santa Monica. And I think ultimately, it's a question of who who is benefiting with with the limited overall resources you know, that are available. Is it best focused on creating, you know, broader housing opportunities? Or, you know, is is money funneled towards kind of, you know, a handful of of tenants who, you know, could benefit from, who can afford ownership and who could benefit from that, that it's at the cost of kind of, you know, the sort of broader assistance. So I think, you know, in in looking at this, and we're continuing to look at other programs in other cities, that research is not quite complete yet, but, you know, I think what we're finding is a sort of more direct approach to this would be some sort of down payment assistance. You know, we've certainly seen that in in other cities, but there's not, obviously not an identified funding source at this time for that. And finally, this last section here is talking about, you know, the steps towards a compliant housing element. That was a sort of key direction of council is to procure a compliant housing element. And, you know, I think this is really just a summary of our overall approach to this, as we look at creating programs in the draft housing element update. You know, it really comes back to ensuring that there's a program that ensures feasible zoning standards. So we are establishing, you know, FARs or densities that support our inclusionary housing program. It's being informed through these feasibility analyses. You know, I think an example of, you know, these preliminary findings are showing that our existing tier-one FARs are not sufficient to support even 100% market rate housing in some of these zones. And, you know, that's, I think, something we want to take a look at. It supports commercial, you know, I think that's kind of projects we're seeing in these areas, you know, but how can we incentivize housing in those areas and that it matches up with the inclusionary housing that is required for projects. And then finally, I think, you know, what, once we've established that, it then, you know, allows us to calculate the zone capacity or the capacity on on sites on on the SSI. And, you know, I think what what state law allows us to do, and I think we wanted to, you know, offer this concept or introduce this concept to the Planning Commission, you know, because I think there have been questions about how do we demonstrate, you know, that we're able to have enough, plan for enough units across all income categories is the housing element law allows the use of higher density as a proxy for lower income affordability. So if we're able to demonstrate the realistic capacity that the plan for the arena, if sites are zoned for at least 30 units an acre, you know, that the housing element law allows those units to be counted for for lower income units. And I think just putting there as a point of information in our commercial zones, you know, this is generally, we were looking at just some projects and doing some back-end calculations, you know, I think we zone at roughly about 100, 110 units at least that per acre in our in our commercial zones. So, you know, it certainly seems that Santa Monica would be, would would qualify to use that quote-unquote default density, you know, to be able to complete the SSI. So with that, I think that puts an end to my presentation. And we have the whole team available for your questions. And we also have Paul Silver and Ada Peng from HRNA as well for any questions with respect to the feasibility testing.
Thank you, Jing. I neglected to make a full announcement at the beginning of the meeting about what the public commenters should do. And so let me let me remind everyone, and I apologize for not stating this earlier. As, as always, I feel like I'm like giving the takeoff instructions in midair, but here we go. We we have been accepting oral public comment by phone through the pre-registration system. Registration for oral comment closed at 3:30 PM. If you register for public comment, please do check your email for call-in instructions because those were nailed at the start of this meeting. And we want to make sure that anyone who signed up for public comment has the ability to to get in and be heard. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the commission. Comments received after 12:00 PM today will be considered part of the record of proceedings, but will not be posted online with the Planning Commission's agenda, might not be reviewed by the Planning Commission, will not be read aloud during public comment during the meeting. I'll acknowledge personally that I noticed that a number of notes came in after 12:00 noon. So the folks, if you did send them, then please be advised that they may not have been read. And as a reminder, the moderator chat function in BlueJeans is for technical help from administrative staff only. It's not for public comment. The commission cannot see the moderator chat and moderator chat comments will not be forwarded to the commission or entered into the record. So that's just very important for for everyone. With that, why don't we, I'd like to suggest the following. I'd like to give everyone a chance to ask questions before we go to public comment. I'd like to give everyone a chance to ask clarifying questions of Jing. And also, as you are asking your clarifying questions, if you have something that you would like to add as a subject of discussion, please tell us when you're done. I will keep track. And then what we'll do is we'll go back. When we enter into discussion, we'll we'll make our way through the categories in Jing's presentation. And then we'll we'll hit all the categories that folks added to be asked to be added. But that that seems to me to be a way of kind of keeping track, keeping our conversation focused so that we can give direct feedback on each section of the presentation and then make sure we cover everything that everyone else wants to cover. So with that, let me start with Commissioner Fondabagnari for clarifying questions and and any additional items that you would like us to discuss over the course of the
Yeah, let me understand this. If I'm trying to understand which lots in our city are available to be considered as suitable sites. And I was reading through that very complicated Suitable Sites Inventory Guidebook. And it seemed that if you start with one 30 units per acre, very few of our existing zoning would be available because it would be only OP4 and R4 and strictly the residential, not obviously considering commercial lots. But the moment you add any density bonuses, every lot in the OP area and the R area lots would become available. Is that true?
Are you talking about the the residential zones or Ocean Park Boulevard?
I'm talking about the OP zones and the R zones. That is the residential zones in all over the city, basically.
And if we apply the density bonus, would those all become feasible? That I'm not quite following your question.
What I'm saying is, according, if I understood the very complicated guidebook, you can only consider lots that are buildable at the 130 units per acre category. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly? That's their minimum threshold to consider a lot suitable for development?
Jing, I might just jump in here. That's, yeah, that's not, that's not exactly correct. It just means that if you're providing a density of 30 units per acre or more, you're allowed to assume that's a low-income site. That that's basically what it means.
So it's just a way of dividing market rate from low income, is what you're referring to? Okay. So where I was going with this is that that's a starting density, basically 30 units per acre. But in all of our zones, the moment you add any kinds of density bonuses, you go over that so that every lot in Santa, in our city would become available as an affordable lot. Is that understanding correct?
Well, that's determined without density bonus. So we can't assume that like every every applicant will use a density bonus or even use the full bonus. So the 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 capacity calculations, you know, that are applied within the SSI would be based on what is codified in the city's local code, not some other, you know, state state law.
Okay. So right now, what you're saying then is that only OP4 and R4 would qualify as locations for affordable housing. That's what you're really saying. Those are the ones, I'm talking about the rest of the lots. Those are the ones that would meet the 1 to 30 acres.
I think so. I some someone's gonna have to do that math for me, but I'm sure you're right.
Okay. So then there is also a a whole discussion there regarding small sites. And they seem to penalize small sites. And so the question is, what lot width is acceptable in our, because they say you can't call certain sites unless you have to prove some things. My question is, can we prove that any 50-foot site is buildable in Santa Monica in certain areas? In other words, it seems to have a big deal about these small sites. But I don't see why any site is buildable when you're allowed, for purposes of discussion, you know, the incentives that we've seen.
Jing, do you want me to answer this one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So so the guidebook is clear that, you know, if you have a small site less than half an acre, you have to provide substantial evidence that, you know, these kind of sites for housing are likely to be developed. I think we have a long history and record of showing that, you know, sites of a certain size are, you know, under half an acre are developed. So we've so we'll be providing that list to HCD to show that, you know, sites less than an acre, particularly within the city of Santa Monica, where our parcels are smaller, are developable for housing.
Okay. So you don't think that's a problem, that we can go down? Because half an acre would require us to essentially only consider lots where you get three properties, three three pieces of parcels.
Exactly. Yeah. And I don't think that'll be a problem because we've, we do have a list of projects in the in the past that has happened on, you know, I think our our threshold that we're using really is 15,000 square feet. You know, 7,500 square feet is is possible, but it definitely is something that, you know, we would have to really make a special special case for. So we are flagging the ones, you know, parcels and sites that have, you know, common ownership where they do aggregate to about 15,000 square feet, you know, and sites along Montana, for example, are smaller, you know, the parcel sizes are, you know, definitely cut up a lot more. And so, you know, we are taking a look at those, you know, those kind of special issues, you know, we were looking at, for example, whether or not, you know, on a parcel with that's 10,000 square feet, whether or not you could provide subterranean parking. And we've, you know, identified certain sites that have been able to do that. So, you know, there are certain limitations because of size. We just have to provide that kind of evidence to HCD.
Okay. And they also make a big deal in the guidebook about considering vacant lots. And they start taking out everything that might possibly be considered a vacant lot. And essentially, if you follow their script, we really can't take option B because the whole city is already occupied with either parking or underutilized or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So is that another thing where you just show evidence that you could do it, that you could develop this church lot, you could develop the Nielsen Way lots in Ocean Park, you could develop, that you just have to show them how it could be done conceptually? Or do you have to give those up? And is the Plan B dead on arrival?
It's really just providing substantial evidence that, you know, like, we've seen sites, you know, turn over even when they are developed with a one-story commercial building. So we have a running list of those sites and those projects, you know. And so, you know, another thing they consider is, you know, past interests, you know, letters of intent, or, you know, if a previous property owner has expressed interest to the city, you know, that's something that they they consider as evidence to show that a site will turn over. So all of that is taken into consideration.
Okay. My last question, this has to do with ADUs. There's a whole discussion, again, in the guidebook about what what ADUs and how can you make them affordable, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we, and and actually establishing some sort of what's happening in the ADU marketplace in our city. And as I understood it, you were doing a survey about people who were using ADUs and how much they were paying, et cetera, et cetera. Do we have that survey? Are the results in? And to what fine grain are they?
Yeah, so we did do the survey. We had some pretty limited responses. I think, you know, we we did the survey sort of not not establishing any outcome. I think we we sent it out just to see what information we got back. And I think maybe Ross can speak a little bit more to the details of it. But it didn't, I'm I'm not sure that it was enough information for us to, you know, maybe depart from, you know, what has been pre-certified by SCAG.
Yeah, just to chime in, Jing is correct. We did the survey and initially we had 300 people respond, but really only about half actually owned ADUs or lived in them. And even when it came down to how much rent they were charging or paying, I think we only got maybe in the teens at most out of responses. So I would agree with Jing that I don't believe we really received substantial enough information that really gave us a good view on really what ADUs look like out there compared to what SCAG is pre-certified.
Got it. Well, I would hate to leave that on the table because I think that that is a substantial way to address our problem. It's just we need to have a basis for using that. Otherwise, we're stuck with their bogus 600 units. Hello?
Yes.
Yeah.
Was that a question or?
Yeah, my question is, how can we develop data to claim a higher number of ADUs in the affordable category? What would be required to get there? You know, it's right now, we don't know if 600 units, which they're allowing us, is more than we're entitled to. Or, no, no, we can get, we can squeeze more out of this turnout.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, sorry, I was gonna say, we, I mean, we've, we've looked through some, you know, websites like apartments.com. some, you know, websites like apartments.com, looking at, you know, doing searches of, you know, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, granny flats, doing those keyword searches. And in all honesty, the data that we've pulled up, you know, really show that these ADUs are provided almost pretty much market rate rents, you know. Then none of them really seem to be provided at, you know, significantly lower market rate levels than, you know, than our standard apartment unit.
Okay. And then, Sean, you suggested that we should give you additional talking points. So I want to take up adaptive reuse of commercial building for housing. That's one thing. And I'd also like to take up trying to make ADUs true over-the-counter approvals, and that will involve, and I'd also like to think of ways we can reduce the ARB workload by making some bottom thresholds to allow smaller projects in multifamily or in commercial zones to go through without ARB approval. So those are three discussion areas I'd like to throw out there.
I have one, if I can. I believe we're getting an ARB streamlining red light at some point, right, Jing?
Yes, that will be coming to you. I don't remember when, but that is actually being worked on right now.
Okay. But we'll add it to the list to make sure we, yeah, great. Terrific. Okay. Commissioner Frost?
Hi. I had some questions about the city-owned sites. So when we say they're being prioritized for housing that has 50% affordable units, how is that related? How is that prioritization? What are we doing relative to the information that's on these charts?
Yeah. So that was a statement that, that's why I said it was, we clarified, we weren't just looking at 50% affordable units, we're looking at prioritizing 100% affordable housing projects on city-owned sites, as council had directed us to do. But part of that exploration, you know, in terms of, you know, because ultimately, we have to kind of figure out how many units, you know, could be on those sites. You know, we have to consider the sort of, you know, funding of that and then other constraints, you know, depending on that particular site, you know, whatever. They're all quite different, right? And also, you know, with the amount of affordable housing, the scale that we're talking about, if it's in the hundreds, if not, you know, close to 1,000 of units, you know, that's very expensive. And, you know, where's that money coming from? You know, that's all, that's basically the approach we're taking to this, try and understand, you know, those pieces to help us come to, you know, some estimate as to the number of units on city-owned sites.
Okay. When I went through this chart, there were a couple of things that kind of jumped out at me. One, which is kind of on the small side, I mean, it's just sort of a point, which is that the fires, you know, when we started this whole thing and we talked about suitable sites, we were going to not list historic resources. And of course, the fire station is a designated structure of merit. And you just listed here what we do to get out of our own city's designation of historic resource. So that was very troubling to me. But you don't have to comment on that. I just had to point that out at this moment. But the other thing that troubled me, that I do have a more direct question about, was in terms of the Main Street parking lots, I couldn't help but note that this is a huge area, an entire strip behind Main Street and Ocean Park, that if it were 100% affordable, could be 80 feet tall behind Main Street in this. Well, the first thing that popped into my mind was the projects. It's gonna look like projects of affordable housing à la Robert Moses, and not really what we are aiming for. And, you know, I'm very concerned, the two things I'm concerned about in some of the provisions here are social justice and, but making sure that we don't use social justice as an excuse to do things that aren't really good ideas. But more importantly, how are we looking at some of the more massive ramifications of some of these proposals in terms of our cityscape and unintended consequences? You know, I think about, for example, where are we thinking about that? The example that, of course, comes to mind are all of our big 50s and 60s redevelopment projects, like the Towers in Ocean Park and the Civic Auditorium, where we literally blocked off chunks of the city, because at that time, they thought that was a really good idea. And now we have these access issues and traffic issues and all kinds of issues because of that planning, which they thought was a great idea then and really wasn't. So how do you, how do we, how do you, how does anyone remember to take a step back and try to really think about what those kind of unintended consequences we could be creating with this are and how to avoid them? I know that's very abstract.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's a very practical, you know, city planning, you know, in its broader sense and urban design question, and I think that's a perspective as well. You know, and I think some of the disconnect may be, you know, this is an exercise in planning for those needs. And it's a little bit more technical in that regard. You know, we're not literally designing projects on city-owned sites, you know. So I think the big questions you have, you know, is going to be through the sort of future, you know, no doubt, the future public process that will come with each and every one of those city-owned sites, you know, and how they relate to their context, you know, what uses might be on them, you know, potentially in addition to the affordable housing, you know. I think those are all, those are all things that will be, you know, vetted through, you know, if and when any of those sites kind of move forward for that purpose. It's, you know, how, almost every city-owned site kind of starts, you know, we go through this sort of, you know, almost, it's a zoning analysis and, you know, what's feasible, you know, how much, you know, what's the possibilities here? I think that's kind of the phase that we're at right now. And, you know, it's, we certainly don't have the time, the capacity to be doing, you know, 11 different designs and thinking through, you know, all of those, the individual plans for that, right? It's really just trying to figure out, you know, given some very broad sweeping, you know, generalized assumptions, you know, how many, how many units could be anticipated, you know, on these sites?
But if, for example, with behind Main Street, if we zone it, if we put in, because this is our city-owned land, and our council says that it has to be 100% affordable housing because it's our land and we can decide that before we let go of it, and that's in our code, that's kind of in our plan, then when these projects come before us, according to state law, we don't really have any, it's over by then, because there's no more discretion, especially with affordable housing. There's very little discretion on our part. So how do we make sure that we're not incentivizing the projects?
Yeah. So I mean, again, because it's city-owned land, you know, yes, you're right, if it's a project, you know, I think from that kind of review perspective, that may be the case. But, you know, as the property owner, you know, when we, when you go through a ground lease process or what have you, like, that's the control, the city and its proprietary capacity as, you know, site control, you know, and can establish objectives and the like, you know, for that site that are different, you know, it's a different role when we're just a regulator, you know, for private property, you know. So that's, and that's what I mean, like, it goes through, you know, whenever, whenever any public land kind of, you know, goes up through that RFP process, you know, and is put up there for some sort of public-private, you know, partnership, it's a very open and public process, you know. And I would, that will be the case, you know, for any of these city-owned sites going forward.
Sounds risky, but okay. Thank you very much. The two things that I would like to talk about is I'm interested in talking about home ownership and also R1 zoning, because I feel like those two topics are related to social justice issues and may have less to do with the actual, this is how we're gonna get affordable housing on the table, and I would like to talk about that here and just, you know, express some view.
So those are actually on the list of, those are the lists, so that, I'm assuming we're gonna be talking through all of those. Is there anything, Nina, that was not in the staff report? For example, I want to talk about housing stability, because we didn't talk, that's not anywhere in the report.
No, I mean, that's, those are the things I want to talk about.
Awesome. Okay. Just making sure. Okay, let's go to Commissioner Lambert.
Okay. Thank you. My first question, Jing, and it's really a confirmation of what I think is already the case. My impression for the city council meeting on housing was that their first priority is to submit a compliant housing element to the state. Is that correct? And how we get there is the question. But they definitely want a housing element that produces 8,800 units in one way or another.
That's correct.
The other question, I would like for you to confirm that when we come up with our development capacity that gets us to the 8,800 units, we can only count units built according to underlying zoning. We cannot count anticipated adaptive reuse units, we cannot count density bonus units, we cannot count AHOD units. The only exception is ADUs, because the state provides us with a formula for that. But otherwise, it is only what existing zoning will allow to be developed on a site. Is that correct?
That's right. What's codified in our, in our local code, yeah.
So we can't count density bonuses, we can't count AHOD, and we can't count adaptive reuse, because we have absolutely no idea how that's all gonna come about, right?
Right. And yeah, as you heard me say, we can't assume that, you know, any one applicant is going to, you know, do to the maximum of our idea.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, the only way to, the only way to kind of make, you know, things that are, that are, whether they're state law, what have you, you know, count, so to speak, is like, we could rezone, you know, to accommodate that capacity, for example.
So that actually brings to a confusion for me, and I've had it all along. When we go in with our site inventory and our unit projections, and it is clear at some point, perhaps, that the underlying zoning is not gonna take us to the 8,800 units, do we go in with a proposed rezoning of sites to get us to the 8,800 units?
Yeah. So essentially, how the housing element update works is that it doesn't have, doesn't have like FAR tables in it, right? So what it is, it's a, you have the goals, and then you have the policy. So basically, like, the strategies of, you know, what's our housing plan for the next eight years. And then you're required to put in there what they call housing programs. So that's basically the implementation piece of it. You know, and that's what, you know, for example, it may say something along the lines, you know, that the city shall rezone, you know, these zone districts, right, to ensure, you know, whatever, like, that's the idea. And then, once HCD certifies that, then the city is committed to follow through on that implementation. So that's what allows the city to then, you know, basically use those rezonings, you know, in their SSI.
So if a developer came in, if a developer came in on one of those sites that's identified, and we have said it has to be upsand to accommodate, you know, to get us to where we need to go, can that developer then apply for a project pursuant to that?
So the rezoning would actually have to take place. So our, our goal is that when this comes back to the city council for final adoption before October 15th, is that our plan is to bring not just the housing element itself, but also implementing ordinances associated with that housing element. So it kind of all goes together. You know, it's a little different in the past where we've done like the strategy plan, and then the, you know, the ordinances might be a little bit separate apart. Our goal is to try and bring that together. If for some reason it doesn't, you know, we do have time to do it.
You have three years to rezon.
Three years. You do, yeah. But, you know, that's
But that's definitely gets you where you want to go, if you have a capacity.
But to provide, you know, certainty, you know, if we want to incentivize housing, if that is the goal, to have it happen, obviously, you know, we need to make sure that the codes are changed to accommodate that. So that's
But if the housing element says, because we need to, that we're gonna put 50 units on the site, even though only 30 are allowed now, couldn't someone build 50 units?
No.
This housing element trump it?
If your code doesn't, you have to actually change the code to allow that.
Not my impression, but
They couldn't just build something else, you know, that your zoning ordinance doesn't, doesn't
Not my impression.
The city's required to commit to implement that program, you know, if it's not, if it's not been adopted. Or in that case, you know, they, I think we're planning, I think the recommendation is to plan for more, a little more than your, than what the RENA says, because of the under-housing element, you know, you can't have sort of any, a no-net loss, so you can't be below your RENA at any point in time. So even if it's not on that site, like, they look at it from an overall perspective. So you would look at rezoning another site, you know, to be higher.
But you're in the same situation with another site.
Yeah, but it doesn't automatically just like rezone that without the ordinance having happened, right?
Another question I have, when you look at the feasibility of your interpretation of the density bonus law and applying AHPP, did you apply AHPP to the entire project or just the base number of units, which is what the density bonus law does?
We haven't quite gotten to that level of detail, but, you know.
But you came up with a feasibility analysis, so you must have applied it to something.
We based it on, I think we backed into a base, I'm trying to remember, on some assumption.
My guess is you applied it to the whole project, whereas density bonus requires that percentage applied to the base number of units without the density bonus.
I think, correct. That's, Jing, I think, is correct. We applied it to the whole project, yeah.
Which would make a different feasibility scenario if you used the state density bonus law.
You mean, when we, so when we tested for, when we tested for scenario A, we applied the 50% bump to the FAR.
Right, right.
Yeah, the total.
And then you applied the percentage inclusionary to the entire project with that bump, right?
Maybe we should bring in an AS.
Well, you can tell us later, but I suspect that's what you did. And if you did it according to the law, you would have a different feasibility conclusion. And then I have a couple of smaller questions. On page eight, there's something very odd, based on my experience in this field. You say for smaller, you talk about doing an HR and a feasibility study on city-owned sites to determine their capacity. I've never heard of such a thing. When we did Parking Structure III RFP, we did not do that. We asked the nonprofits, who frankly know more than we do, how many units would fit on that site? Why didn't we do that again?
Because we're not putting out 11 RFPs right now. We're just making perspective, so are you asking why we're not asking nonprofits to tell us?
I just don't see, the way I read it is that you're gonna have HR and I do a study to see how many units could fit on a particular city site, and then you're gonna proceed with that. So is that for the housing element you're doing it?
Yeah, because there are sites that are on the SSI.
Okay.
We have to calculate some kind of capacity on there. So that's
I got it, okay.
It doesn't, it's not establishing it forever. It's just
I understand, okay. And then again, on page eight, why did you not include the Apple site, I have no idea why it's called the Apple site, in the large site chart as a potential site? It's the one by the downtown expo station.
That one has a, it has a 10-year lease for EV charging on it.
Well, I would really hate to see an EV charging station stop a housing project. I mean, isn't there some other place we could put those EVs?
It's listed on the table.
Right.
Yeah, but it's not included in your list of big projects that we're gonna pursue.
I think it's because of the, because of that long-term lease. It's not clear that it would be able to be removed or altered, I guess I would say. You know, it's, we're just kind of learning more about the terms of that. But it is on the list as, you know, having housing
I know that, I know. It's just, I mean, that is a big, extremely valuable piece of land. It would be nice to see it developed.
No, I mean, obviously, the city has talked about it for quite some time. No, I mean, obviously the city has talked about it for, uh, quite some time. Um, you know, for, uh, there's been a variety of ideas about that site. So it, it's, it's on the list. It doesn't mean that it come, comes off. I think we're trying to think about what, what would realistically go for it in, you know, this eight-year cycle.
Okay. The other question I had, and it's been raised by some members of the public is why did we set a minimum of 7,500 square, square feet in R1 districts for development potential? But 70% of the, of the R1 sites in Sunset Park are below 7,000 square feet. But was there something magic about 7,500?
I think that was just based on average lot size, um, generally speaking, but that's a good observation. We can certainly look at that again.
Because they would, they would like leave the R1 Sunset Park neighborhood sort of free and clear from densification, uh, if you stuck, stuck with that. Um, and then what I would like to see in the housing element is some acknowledgement that there are 27,000 some odd rent-controlled units in the city and that to the extent we have a middle-income housing supply, they're it. Um, and when you look at the, with the rents, the average rents of rent-controlled units, they are far less than the new construction units. So they do provide an option for middle-income folks. So I, I just think we should have some acknowledgement of the importance of protecting those units in the housing element. Because they are a housing supply that's very important, aside from part of independent tenants', uh, security.
I don't think there's been any suggestion of, um.
Well, when we talk about rezoning neighborhoods, that could come up. Um, you know, you're talking about design schemes for the densification of, it's on page nine. When are those going to be done?
Um.
Do you have any idea?
I think it's in the next week and a half, is it, or two weeks?
Oh, cool.
I don't, I don't know, Rachel, if we have, I'm, I'm, I don't know. We'll have to, yeah.
Let me, yeah, we had a, I think it was in the next couple of weeks. Um.
Yeah, I was just curious. It's, it's a really good idea. Um, and that is.
We should have it in time for your, for your hearings on the draft element. It, it may not be in the packet, but.
Yeah, it will be by, by the meeting.
By the fourth. Yeah. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. That's it.
Leslie, do you have anything you want to add for discussion later? Additional?
Well, it's not, it's not discussion. And I will talk about it. I just think it's important to acknowledge that we have a very large supply of middle-income housing in Santa Monica. Certainly not new construction, but we have a large supply of relatively affordable rent-controlled units in Santa Monica compared to the new construction rents that we saw.
Okay. All right. Uh, we will move on to Commissioner Pastner.
Thank you. Um, some of my questions have already been asked. There was, I think there's been some confusion in one of the members of the public raised this with me. Is there some scenario where you're, you're suggesting that you would lower the base density of the tiers?
No, that's, that's not a proposal that's on the table.
Okay. And did you, has there been any consideration of getting rid of the tiers? And just having, I mean, and maybe that's like a very sensitive topic, but like it seems to me as someone who is not here during the booth, right, that tiers are really convoluted and don't.
Yeah, we've, we're laughing because we, we've literally spent hours dragging into days talking about that, that potential, that, that idea. Um, you know, I, I think at this moment, we're not, we're not proposing it because it's sort of one thing at a time, but it's, it's definitely something that we've considered. I mean, it may, it may, we may end up there, you know, just, just depending on, on, uh, which, which way we go with respect to, to the scenarios, but, um, it's certainly something we've discussed.
Do you have, or do you, HRA, the whole team, right, do you guys have an answer as to what base density we would need to have a, to have the, or a development to be feasible with the existing AHPP or the MUB, MUBL? What is that base density?
Yeah, we've run, we, we have preliminary findings. So we shared information we had at the time with respect to MUBL. So, um, if I can, I'll just put up my screen again that. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Has the right screen up? Okay. Um, so this is for MUBL. Um, you can see there scenario B, this, this column here. Um, so in order to support 10%, uh, very low income, you need an FAR of 2.27. Um, and that's compared to 1.5 right now. And then at the tier two level, this is 15% VLI. Um, there's actually pretty nominal difference between 10 and 15% VLI for FARs. So in the MUBL, they happen to be the same. If I think in, um, a, a couple of other zones, there's like a 0.2 bump or something like that. So that's kind of generally where these are.
So that assumes that 2.27 base density, whether it frankly be for tier one or two, I mean, this a little bit demonstrates why the tiers don't work, but again, you know, listen here for that discussion. Um, and that is within a 10% VLI. Fire it for the AHPP?
That's the FAR that is necessary to support 10% VLI. Um, that's our preliminary finding.
And. And. Does the, when you talk about the difference in feasibility for tier one and tier two, does the unit mix play into that? Right. What, what differentiates the feasibility for those two tiers? And to me, the big difference is the unit mix requirement, right, and then the amount of affordability.
Yeah. I mean, those are, I think, the, the most visible. Um, I, I guess I should also clarify that this is the, you know, the FARs we're talking about here, this is the tier one with an onsite affordable housing. So you have to have the onsite affordable housing. When we're talking about the base tier one density, that, that is unchanged at 1.25.
Without housing?
Without housing. Right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, not without, like with, if you were to do like an off-site housing project, that would be your base density. Uh, or if you had no onsite affordable housing, it'd be 1.25. Um, so I think, I, I, I only clarify that because, um, I don't want there to be misunderstanding that it's like the den, state density bonus in addition to this 2.27 example, it would be state density bonus on top of 1.25. Um, you know, plus any incentives or conditions that everyone wants to apply for. The tier one with onsite affordable housing represents a, a run we did, you know, this would be essentially like a, a local increase, um, you know, to accommodate onsite affordable housing. That's different than density bonus.
But you would, well, but you would have to, because I think the density bonus law has to be, be down, which maybe we disagree on, to get to that 2.27, does that assume a density bonus or not a density bonus?
That, um, that means that it would be established that if you provide onsite affordable housing in accordance with the city's AHPP. So remember when we talked about in our presentation, like you could go through state density bonus law, right, and say if I get, if I do 10% VLI, I get a 32.5% density bonus.
Right.
So in this example, that's 1.25 times, you know, 32.5%. And that's, um, something, you know, that, that comes up to, to a number. Um, and it's not, it, it, I believe it's less than 2.27 potentially. Um, so, you know, in that case, like what we're doing here is we are, because we have an inclusionary housing program, which most cities do not, when we codify it in our zoning code, we want to ensure that there is, that, that we have FARs that can support that inclusionary. Uh, and Heidi may want to jump in here if I'm talking in circles.
No, I, I think Jing, Jing explained what I was going to explain. So the, so as she's, so in the example that's in your presentation and your staff report, the base density is the 1.25. If an applicant walked in the door and wanted to, to, um, proceed with a project that included the 10% VLI, which is the city's minimum requirement for AHPP, state density bonus law says you get a 32.5% increase. That takes you to about 1.68. What staff did in working with HRNA was what is the feasibility of a project with that amount of affordable housing set aside? And that's where they came up with the 2.27. Does that help a little?
It does, but then the question is then what is your base density house?
Your base density housing is still the 1.25 tier one, which is what it's always been. Right? So, so if we did not do the HRNA analysis and you walked in the door and asked for the increase under the state density bonus law, you just get that bump. It's only the 32.5% over your base density, which is what happens now. You get the onsite affordable with housing bump because you have to put the onsite affordable onsite. If you do it offsite, you don't get the bump because you're not providing it onsite.
Well, I, I think that's problematic, so I'll address that in my comments. Um, because if we are not making it feasible to build inclusionary units from the base density, I mean, it's very, it's very confusing. It's very confusing. I understand that. Um, and then.
So, so this is an attempt to ensure that they are both in compliance with the state density bonus law, that there is at least as much increase as required under state law and also ensuring the feasibility on top of that.
And that's feasible. Right.
Yeah. So that's the two levels.
Right. But then I still don't understand why that, why you don't have to increase your base density to get there. Right? How do you get to the 2.27? That's what I don't exactly understand.
That 2.7, 2.27 would be an upzoning.
Okay.
That, that zoning code amendment. Yeah. No, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that, that would be a zoning code, that would be a zone change.
Okay. And then something we talked about in previous, um, discussions was that there's a difference between sort of their feasibility and like what people are really going to build. Have, have you guys had a chance, understanding that you are very, very busy, but like has any of the feasibility analysis been shared with on-the-ground developers in terms of like, yeah, I could get this financed. Like HRNA says this is like quote-unquote feasible.
Yeah, the, um, the, all of the assumptions, um, that went into the analysis were, were shared with the production technical working group. Um, you know, so every, the, the inputs, you know, that, that go into the model, um, were shared with them. So that, I mean, that, that to me is, that, that's the important piece. You know, what are the assumptions? What are your assumptions on construction, total development cost, all that stuff, um, you know, was, was talked through, um, in very, very detailed fashion with the.
Okay. So, so this is a new feasibility analysis. This is the old, not old, but this is the previous feasibility analysis we talked about.
This, oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, this is, this is building, this is building on that. Um, there's additional runs in here because the, the new, the, the new, um, uh, testing has to do with the council direction because we, we had sort of tried to do some preliminary idea just from the original concept and then HRNA had to do additional work again. So it's using again those, this base assumptions.
Okay. And then have we, kind of a Heidi question? Um, have we looked at whether or not limiting the changes in single-family neighborhoods to lots that are only 7,500 square feet? Have we looked at whether that legally satisfies the, um, our affirmative requirement to provide fair housing? I don't think I said that right. You know what I mean?
Exactly. No. So that's actually kind of part of our overall analysis that we're, you know, undertaking as this evolves. Um, so we have not specifically looked at that issue, but we are looking at it because it is part of a whole. Um, but that is certainly being taken under consideration when we get, you know, how to meet that goal for the housing element as a whole and for the city as a whole.
I think I'm going to stop there. Thank you so much.
All right. Do you have anything that wasn't in the report that you want to add for discussion later?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Sounds good. Let's go to Commissioner Pastner.
Thank you. So some of my questions have been answered. Um, just starting off, just to be clear with respect to the, uh, statement in the staff report regarding the, the parcel coverage for, um, um, city-owned sites will be used for, for, um, affordable housing. Just to be clear, it was not the city council's direction that 50% of the parcel coverage would be used for, um, affordable housing. Is that correct?
Right. It was, we, we, we understood that to be prioritized. You know, I think we looked at as, as much affordable housing as, as possible on, on, on the site. So that's, that's what we understood as the direction is, is to look at, you know, first, and that's the approach is like, you know, if it was only 100% affordable housing, like what would it take to achieve that? And if that is, you know, somehow not workable, like what are some other options? So that's kind of the approach we're taking with this.
Got it. Um, with respect to density bonuses, could you speak a little bit more towards why we're going through the approach of, uh, FAR-based density bonuses not having a menu of concessions?
Um, so the menu of concessions is a separate, uh, concept than bonus. So the, the, the bonus is established in those tables in the government code. There's a separate, um, that, that is actually the proposal here is to establish that menu, um, they, using essentially the modifications and waivers chapter in the zoning ordinance as like that's your menu of incentives and concessions. We're offering that, um, just as a way to, you know, make it easy for applicants that I could start here, but it certainly does not preclude them from, um, proposing something off-menu, so to speak. Um, you know, it just involves providing some information as to showing why, you know, that's necessary to support the onsite affordable housing. So that, that, we are actually proposing that.
Got, got it. Okay. Yeah. I, I might've, might've misunderstood then, um, based on the focus on the, on the FAR bonuses that that, uh, might not have been part of the broader proposal. But yeah, I'm definitely interested in seeing more, more specifics when this comes back of what, uh, that menu is going to look like. Um, and.
Yeah. Chapter 9.43 is, is essentially what we're saying. Like that, that would be the menu. I think what we're trying to also explain is that, you know, we haven't put in there, I, I don't think that we're adding to the menu at this point, like height and FAR because we're not, I, I, that feels a little bit arbitrary, you know, but I think what we wanted to illuminate for the commission is that it is entirely possible for an applicant to receive a bonus, um, you know, FAR and also request an incentive concession for FAR. Like that state law actually does allow that. So we wanted to make sure that was clear, um, to everybody.
Got it. Okay. Um, have you looked at other, other jurisdictions for, for, for models? I, I know, um, you know, West Hollywood, for example, has some really creative, uh, solutions to this. I'm curious if you've looked at those?
We have. We've, we have looked at many models of, yeah, um, in terms of how this is done. And it's, it's, it's interesting because, um, a, a lot of cities actually have like FAR and density in their commercial zones. Um, this question of you, how do you do, like, what do you do when you only have FAR? Um, you know, we, we looked at cities for, for those examples. And, and that's where it was just like, everybody does it a little bit differently. And so, you know, I think what we're trying to do is come up with something that fits into our, your land use system. It's, you know, a, a little bit unique among cities maybe, um, but it is, you know, our adopted use. And so we're trying to honor that, you know, because that's, that took a long time to put together and it has meaning, um, within our, our community. And so, you know, we're trying to integrate that, you know, to what makes sense for Santa Monica, obviously consistent with having, uh, FARs that can support our inclusionary program, you know, but also, um, following council's direction to, you know, sort of not, not do something like extremely drastic. So that's kind of thread the needle with. So that's kind of thread the needle with with that. So but we've definitely looked at other cities that their models do.
Got got it. And I'm curious too, if you're aware of any of the work that has been done with respect to the tree ordinance updates? Because part of the proposal there is is to potentially protect existing trees by moving around the, you know, the buildable area that would have been on the site of the tree and putting it somewhere else in the parcel. And I'm curious if you're aware of any of that work that's been done?
I I am somewhat aware of it. It's been a really long time. Peter and I were having some pretty regular conversations when it was going on, but it's been feels like it's three years ago, I think, since we talked. And that that concept does does ring a bell with me. You know, I think it was somewhat, it was still somewhat conceptual as an idea. And it's hard for us to count for something like that, you know, at this point. It doesn't sort of have, you know, some some more form around it. You know, and I'm not sure what extent it would have an impact on this.
Yeah, I mean, I know that, I mean, I understand that the situation is what is what it is with the the tree ordinance at this point, but it'd be great if that could be harmonized to whatever extent it can. And then let's see. Yeah, a lot of my questions have been answered already. I'll I'll stop there. I'll just add that two things to talk about that I'd like to discuss in in some capacity. I don't know if it can be woven into other things are opportunities for enhancing rental assistance programs or emergency rent programs and the extent to which our supply of emergency housing for the homeless is adequate.
Okay, Commissioner Reese.
I'll mute here. Thank you. First of all, I heard a young voice during a lot of that presentation and that was our planning manager's child in the background. I really give her kudos for being able to focus professionally and be a parent. If that wasn't you, somebody else needs to go on mute. But anyways, let's get to the easy ones first. If, you know, there's a discussion in here that you need ample evidence of these 15,000 square foot sites working for affordable projects. I'm happy to give you some examples. I have examples of a 14,000 square foot project where we put in 48, 48 restricted affordable units and also did 49 replacement commercial parking spaces and another 13,000 foot site that had 40 units on it. So I can provide some evidence if you're interested. Then I was wondering if you could put up a slide. You had some slides that showed kind of the social equity area, the red line, the red line areas where we're trying to keep the affordable housing overlay out of. And I want to get a, want us to take a look at that and see if, see how that compares with kind of our expo stations as well.
Yeah, here you go. So it it basically aligns up almost right in the area where the expo stations are. That's kind of why we did this to show, you know, this is this is generally the area where it's at. There's, you know, includes the airport as well. And then, hang on, it's not, here we go. So you see the that half mile around major transit stops. It, you know, essentially covers that that whole area. And I think this this illustrates the point that the housing commission brought up, you know, is whether we should be looking at other other demographic or other metrics. And we are in the process of of doing that to see if there's a better tool to be using. I think from an environmental justice and, you know, obviously historic perspective, it was a place that we wanted to start and it helped illuminate that issue. But the housing commission, I think rightly pointed out that, you know, perhaps that that may be too blunt of a of a metric to be using. And, you know, so we're looking at demographic data, concentration of, you know, actual units that have been built and what have you to, you know, provide a finer finer lines of this.
So Jing, if I don't understand, I'm having a little trouble reading the colors in the small small print in front of me, but you're saying, what I think you're saying to me is is where our transit stations are, we're not specifically prohibiting them from having up from these overlays and or potentially some upzoning if needed to meet our numbers. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think that, you know, like we we overlaid state dense, you know, the allowance under state density bonus law because that obviously overrides, you know, whatever we're trying, you know, whatever we do at the local level here, like we wanted to illustrate that allowance. So it doesn't seem like it, you know, could be precluded from that necessarily from an affordable housing perspective. From a from a market rate, you know, certainly it, you know, we can make choices about whether we continue to incentivize in that area. You know, if you recall, the the commission had discussions with respect to the industrial conservation district, you know, which is kind of right around this area. You know, an area that has, you know, traditionally had, you know, quite a, you know, had had concentration of affordable housing around it. So I think that was something the commission had discussed about, you know, do we incentivize, you know, more more housing in that area? This area that has, although it's not literally been in that in that industrial conservation zone surrounding it, you know, certainly has had a concentration.
Okay, and I think I'm most focused really on affordable because, you know, there's a lot of evidence that that people who have a certain income are more likely to use transit than others. And I'm sensitive to the historic policies that we've had, which have been negative in our society. But I also don't think that two wrongs make a right and we should try to put people near the transit who are more likely to use it. So I'd like to try to hold on to that in our in our city. Another question I have for you is, I'm a little lost where we are with micro units in the city. Are we allowing them at all?
So so we don't have literally a term called micro unit in our zoning ordinance. So that's an undefined term. We do prohibit market rate, single room occupancy projects, SROs. That is not permitted. They have to be 100% affordable. That's current code in our zoning ordinance. As part of the implementation piece, that's not necessarily for, that's, it's a lot of complicated intersection of use classifications within our zoning ordinance that we're going to have to take a careful look at, you know, to try and untangle for the implementation in the fall. Because, you know, we would need to define what we mean by by micro unit because, you know, there's efficiency units, there's SROs, there's a dwelling unit definition in our zoning ordinance, right? You would need to understand sort of, you know, what what does everybody think about that? I think we're just putting a concept out there of, you know, smaller units being allowed as a to support moderate income. You know, we, but we don't have something in mind with respect to like a minimum size at this moment.
Okay, well, I'd like to continue that discussion because I think that will be important. Just an option to have out there. Then I really struggle with the density bonus and, you know, state law density bonus is written for density. The Rena numbers are written for density, yet we have FAR. And it's it's so hard for me to make this calculation that we're actually being consistent with density bonus law. So one of the first thing I'd like to ask is, could you bring back up that table that showed the number of units that you thought you could get from the density boner?
Here you go, this one?
Yeah. So a little of this gets back to what Commissioner Lambert said, which is, so in this scenario, you're telling me in scenario, scenario A, tier one onsite affordable. I'm assuming this is a market rate developer comes in and he's going to put aside some amount of affordable to get 26 units. Is that what you're telling me?
That's right.
And how many, so how many of those units are going to be affordable?
Um, one second, yeah.
You muted yourself just, Jing.
Jing, I believe it's zero, zero percent, 0%. Are you, are you, Commissioner Reese, are you referring to the, I don't have the table up, but are you referring to the tier one base?
No, there's tier one plus affordable. It came up with 26 units or something. And again, Jing, if you're speaking to us, you are muted. Nope.
The microphone is off on Blue Jeans.
Are we? Jing is muted. Can't hear you.
Not at all.
Your mic is picking, your mic is picking up from something that you're not speaking into.
Melissa, can you unmute her on your end?
There you go, there you go.
I just did, but she's logged in as a moderator as well. She has all the rights that I do.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
There you go.
I don't know, something's, you're going to charge the headset maybe. Okay. Right, I I can, can you just repeat your question again?
Yeah, well, I mean, so you have that number, you have that chart up there and it had a series of number of units. And I'm trying to figure out what's my base density, what's my set aside? And what's my total density?
Okay. I'm wondering, Ada, are you able just to talk through that from the from the tables you sent over, if at all possible? I'm just going to ask Ada from HRNA, since they ran those numbers for us.
Jing, can you hear hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you put the numbers up while she's speaking, please?
Yeah. Let me do that right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is an illustrative approach mainly to address, I think, Commissioner James' comment about how do we present in terms of number of units, not FAR? And here, so we translate our FAR numbers or of units to show that the base scenario, for example, if we look at scenario B, currently it only supports 17 units with existing FAR. And if developers want to have higher density, they would have to build affordable housing on sites to reach tier two, which is 32 units. And in that, we assume five of it, five of the 32 are affordable units. And this is just an illustration to show that at FAR 2.27, which is the equivalent FAR, that scenario can support five affordable units. And that is based on the total 32 units, not the base 17%, not the base 17 base unit, just to clarify. But again, as Jing was mentioning, this is really more to illustrate how density bonus typically work in terms of number of units. And we translate that in from the FAR.
Well, I still have a lot of questions here. So you went to 32 units in scenario B, the tier two, which I see as voluntary. I was, I'm trying to focus on a tier one affordable housing project.
To to illustrate for tier one with onsite affordable housing, that 26 unit, two of those are affordable units. So developers viewed nine units in total and then two of them are affordable units.
So nine out of the, two out of the 26 are going to be affordable. And this, and the two, and we have a 10% set aside, so that's one and a half. That gets you to the two. So you are actually assuming it's on the base density? Not the total density, okay?
I think, I think if I can just jump in also that, you know, this is, we, we're working pretty quickly, so this is like a rough estimate of just generally what it might look like. You know, certainly the numbers can change here, including the affordable. And I think we'll obviously relook at the calculations again. But this just generally gets you a sense. I think that's what you were asking was to try and get a sense of the number of units and incorporating, you know, certain assumptions about HP Pen Affair.
And how, how do we come up with, how do we come up with the 17? And you also had a comment early, you had another comment that said, I think all of our commercial zoning is about 110 units per acre. And again, I I love units per acre or density per lot area, but now we have this floor area and all of a sudden we're coming up with 17 units. So how did we get to, I mean, I I just don't understand the calculation of how we get to.
I mean, we can talk about that in more detail, but we, there's just certain development assumptions. And I think maybe Ada, you can talk about that too. Like we just had to, you know, in order to convert FAR, like there's nothing, we don't have a formula to convert FAR the number of units because that's really, that's not what we're telling applicants, right? It's just if you get an FAR, applicants will decide based on, you know, the the requirements of the zoning code, how many units are going to come out of that? And it may be different from project to project. So there's not really a sort of, you know, one size fits all equation that that works here because we do not have units per acre in our commercial zones.
Right, but but now we're hurting one of the most important important aspects, I think, which is predictability. I mean, if a client comes to us and says, I have this site, what can I do with it? I've got to be, as a land use consultant, I've got to be able to produce a report that tells him with certainty what he's going to be able to do. And that's where I'm, that's the kind of the vision that I'm, the prism I'm looking at this on. So I really, I would really urge us to come up with a formula that works so that you can make that calculation easily for folks. Because again, predictability is really an important aspect of of developing. Even though I don't think it really exists, but that's what we strive for. So let me, let me turn some attention to, okay, how about this question for you, Jing? If we have a, in our current tier system, and I should be sharper on this than I than I am, but we have a base density of 1.25. In the loose, we were saying, look, we really don't want you to to develop commercial, so we're going to give you a bonus FAR and a bonus height to incentivize residential. Correct?
Right, there is a, there there is a built in bonus for onsite affordable housing.
Well, it was onsite residential, not just housing. We had, the affordable housing had to happen. If you want to do residential, we are going to give you an increase in FAR.
Yeah, that, well, no, because there's, there's a tier one. If you can see in the zoning code, it's, there's a tier one and then tier one with onsite affordable housing. So it wasn't just any housing, you had to have onsite affordable housing.
It kind of was my, okay, well, I'll cut to the chase.
I mean, it's kind of big together, I guess, because, you know, we, any any housing project has to comply with the HPP in some way, so.
So my concern right now would be that at the 1.25, that was a commercial, that was a commercial development, right? And with something that we really didn't want, we didn't think people would, we didn't want people to build because we really wanted the residential. We knew the residential didn't really work at 1.25, so we gave something extra. Now we're coming back today, going back as a base density of 1.25. I'm a little concerned, there's some issues with SB 330 and no downzoning. So I'm not saying that is a problem, I'm just saying be careful of that. And you guys should, you probably have considered that, but that's something that worries me. I'm sure. Now, on incentives and concessions, so I I think there's incentives and concessions to me are the same. And there's another thing called waivers. So I want to talk about the incentives and concessions. I think it's great that you want to put together a menu of items. I would suggest one that's been really effective for a lot of my clients, which has come out in a recent ordinance in the city, the has come out in a recent ordinance in the city, the Qualified Permanent Supportive Housing Ordinance, it is a 20% reduction from any development standard, because in development, the one thing is sure, is every site is unique, and every.
We're not in discussion yet, and we do wanna hear the public comment, so if you're offering suggestions to staff, I just wanna hold off on those until we're making our way through them, we're really still unquestioned.
Okay. So, my question is, would you be open to another development incentive that would be a 20% to any, any development standard to help facilitate development?
What, what you mean, would we look at that?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, I think the, um, the modifications and waivers, they're all like a percentage reduction, and certain ones, I think that's, that's certainly an interesting idea. Um, you know, we can look at, given the scale of, of all the development standards, because the, chapter 9.43 doesn't cover every development standard in the code, it's sort of selected ones.
Right, and you need just, and you just can never anticipate the one, all the ones you need, so having that very.
Yeah, yeah, cer- certainly.
Okay, um, and then waivers, I didn't hear you guys really talk about waivers, is that something in your, in the, uh, in the density bonus program you're looking at?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not something we had focused specifically on yet, um, but yes, you know, obviously, we would have to, to, to look at that as well, as it's just about as far as, as we've gone, but, but they are required by state law, um, you know, that's in, that's in 65915.
Right, so, so is it your understanding that the waiver is, you get, you get a certain amount of incentives based on the number of, afford, the percentage of affordable, and then you can ask for other, other restrictions over, and they're referred to as waivers, is that your understanding?
Right. Am I muted again?
No, you're not.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so I also had heard, we have, we have come to some conclusion here, that it does not appear that we have enough floor area or development rights in projects to justify some of our eight, our, our affordable requirements, and which would require us to go through a zone change. Has there been, and enough zoning? Has there been any consideration when we're doing that in those areas, of putting in a density calculation, so that we can get around this, this inconsistency in my head between density bonus and, and the city's rules? So if you're going through a zone change to increase FAR a little bit, why not just throw in a density standard as well?
I mean, honestly, it's, it's a function, I'm, I'm not sure that we have the time or capacity to, to do that. Um, I think the pitfall of doing that is that if you put a maximum units per acre, inevitably, you are, you're putting yet another regulation, another potential barrier to housing, um, you know, because if, if someone is able to design their projects in a way, um, you know, to, to get a, a different design, different number of units, you know, I, I think what we're just trying to give people an envelope, you know, and how they mold it, um, you know, it is up to them, because I, I could see us, you know, if, if we took that route, someone will inevitably come forward and say, you know, you're, you're, you're preventing me from getting, you know, an extra two or three units, I could have leaked out here, you know, because I designed this differently, so I think that that's sort of the, you know, the approach of, of using FAR, um, you know, I think provides more, more flexibility, um, you know, and, and accounts for those, for those site by site differences.
Okay, well, I guess I'd be less, less concerned about that if we can just create a, a defined.
I mean, it's, it's just unclear to me, like, under, you know, how, how we would go about, like, converting every single FAR in, in commercial zones, that's, it's a pretty monumental effort, you know, and I'm not, I'm not sure we would, that it would, that would result in something meaningful, um.
Okay, I'm gonna stand down. Don't think I have any other questions right now, and I don't have any other, I have, I have discussion points on items that have already been talked about, but I don't have anything new to add.
Okay, uh, all right, um, the great advantage of going last is that most of my questions have been asked and answered, uh, I have thoughts, I appreciate the clarifications, um, and I think what I would like to, um, like to ask really is, what, what is the reason, and I, I wanna, I wanna add it for discussion, but I just wanna get a sense of, um, what is the reason that we didn't see much on housing stability or housing preservation in this update? Um, I have another question as well, but was it primarily that you felt that the council largely accepted the staff report without comment, and therefore, that work is proceeding pretty straightforwardly?
Yeah, that, that, that's right. Um, we're, we're working very closely with our partners in, on the community services department, you know, who, who have certainly the, the closest day-to-day experience, and with that, they're, they're actually helping us, um, in terms of drafting, you know, those, those parts, um, of, of the element, and the council really didn't have any, any objections to the approach of the recommendation, so, um, you know, we, we saw that this meeting is sort of bringing back more, like I said, like, progress updates on, on the key issues, you know, that we were, that, you know, we're still kind of working through, um, but preservation, stability, that seemed like very clear to us, you know, that, of, of the, of the work that was done by, by the working group, by, and comments from the Housing Commissioner and Control Board as well.
Okay, um, and then my other question, and this is, I, I'll, I'll sort of offer a reflection and then ask, um, to, for your sense of this, uh, it strikes me that we have two very, um, we have two very related, but also not overlapping goals with this housing element, um, for which compliance is, you know, something we're working toward. One of them has to do with the RENA, and the finding the space, the suitable sites for the types of housing that our RENA allocation, uh, requires. And the other is achieving our fair housing goals. Um, and my sense, and I'd love to hear you sort of, um, talk about this a little bit more, is that, there, while there may be some areas where we can do both with the same tools, there are probably more areas where we need to look at them as independent goals, and make sure independently that we are hitting our RENA targets and hitting, achieving our fair housing goals. And they may not, the one may not always accomplish the other. Is that a fair assessment?
I think that's right, um, you know, because the steps that we're taking to, um, introduce housing in areas that have historically not accommodated diverse housing populations, um, you know, they don't necessarily have sites large enough or appropriate, you know, enough necessarily to, to accommodate housing, but, um, you know, the steps toward, you know, making housing a permitted use, increasing, uh, you know, upzoning so that it doesn't preclude the opportunity to, to do that, um, you know, are, I think are, are important ones, um, to take, you know, in this, in, in, in achieving that, that mandate, um, you know, because if, if, you know, if, if, if an appropriate site turned over, I think, you know, we didn't, it, it doesn't seem like we want zoning to be the, the reason, you know, that, that there wasn't enough capacity, um, you know, there for someone to, to potentially, um, be interested in, in doing housing, um, in, in those areas, even though our, you know, our, our initial look at it is, you know, there's, there may be not the amount of sites that you see in other parts, um, of, of the city, but, um, and you know, so that's why you see the map the way it is, right? It's not on purpose necessarily, it's sort of looking at, um, you know, where are the, where are the sites that sort of meet this, this criteria, you know, you can't just sort of grab a random one and, and just, you know, make it so, I mean, there, you know, we went through a methodology, um, to do that, so, you know, I think, I, I think that's right, you know, that they, that they are these sort of, they might be under like two, two separate tracks, but, you know, very closely related.
Yeah, although I think some, you know, one of the arguments that's made against certain types of density is that it doesn't achieve affordability, uh, in the sense of, right, AMI affordability, and yet, relative to what a site might, um, cost today, for a very, a single unit, or a very low number of units, uh, that same site could potentially offer, um, much lower cost per unit, even with gentle density, as opposed to, uh, within, within development standards, right? So my question is, is there a recognition that those types of strategies, you know, being able to say, no, this doesn't get us toward RENA number, this is still a market rate unit, but it is a, a fairer and more accessible market rate unit than what it replaced previously?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's a, that, that's a policy question, that's a policy decision, um, you know, I think as, as we showed in, in our approach to, um, of, you know, the example of, of the densifying R1, I mean, I think that's, that's an area where I think precisely that, that question does get raised, you know, if, you know, are, are you pursuing, um, you know, light densification, like, I, I think, we, we don't know the answer to that yet, you know, it's like, what, you know, how many, how many units would support, like, one inclusion, or at least one inclusion or a unit on there, is the question, you know, that we're looking at, and it's like, if it doesn't, if it's a, if it's a, a form, a building form, if it's too many units, you know, and I, I don't, I, I'm not judging, you know, what, what is too many or, or, or too little, I think that's like discussions to come, you know, we just need to present that information, you know, there's a decision point as to, um, you know, if that's not something we wanna pursue, like, yeah, do we then move on to this, you know, different goal of, you know, as, you know, as, as you're saying, opening up additional, um, opportunities for housing that maybe wouldn't have been there before, um, you know, I think that's, that's definitely, um, the, the kind of analysis for, you know, that, that we're going through to, to present that information.
Okay, and then some, some small items in terms of, um, we had a letter from, I think we had a public letter, uh, reminding us to look at parking, so, um, I hope we can circle back and, and sort of, I'm gonna put parking on the list of things to talk about, um, and then, would you, do you believe, one, one issue that has come up is in the menu of density bonuses, um, obviously, and we've talked about this, and I, I, I'm actually wanting to move off the hearing question, which my colleagues have covered, and actually get to the menu question, which is that, um, we have, you know, essentially the ability to create some, if you will, buy right menu options, if you pick one of these, you get a ministerial approval process, if you go off menu, it becomes discretionary, right? Do, do we have legally the ability to essentially adapt those menu options by neighborhood or by zoning district? So that if we wanted to use different types of density incentives in different places, um, density bonus incentives, we could move them around and shape our, uh, shape things that way? Does that my question make sense? You mentioned, you mentioned, for example, you know, like, micro units or unit mix, right? If we said that an incentive in the downtown might be a relaxation of the unit mix, but in, I, I'm not, you know, committing here, but like, if we relaxed unit mix downtown, but we said, no, unit mix is not gonna be on the menu for dense, for a density bonus on, um, in, on Montana or Ocean Park, right? Because those are, right, could we do, could we, could we have a menu item that was available in one place and not another?
I, I, I mean, I don't see why not, um.
No legal bar?
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, Heidi may, may want to jump in, but I don't, I, I don't believe there, there would be.
No, I, I think because this would be an, a voluntary optional menu, and an applicant would always have the right to go off menu if they so chose and go through the process that's set forth in the state density bonus law, it would, it would be fine for us to tailor it specifically to different neighborhoods, we would just need to have a rational basis and a connection between why, um, the, the standards were different, um, in different areas of the city, like we do anytime we set development standards within the city.
We could treat those, and we could treat that menu the same way we treat development standards, essentially, as long as we.
Because again, because it's, and again, it's, it's voluntary, so if somebody says, this is not sufficient for me, I want another incentive or concession, then they, then they would be, um, submitting that request through the process that's set forth in state law, um, as opposed to just getting the, what you're calling buy right, which would be automatic.
Right, yeah, assuming that they were, but, because I think the, well, I'll come back to this in discussion, but I think the goal is to get to rules that are clear and, and, and intelligible, and that people can rely on, and then maximize the, you know, sort of streamline the decision-making process, and so if we get to, if the policy agreements are made, then, you know, it should be, it should be clear to everybody, once there's a political agreement, if you will, on where, what the rules are for any given, any given area. Okay, so, um, we'll come back to parking and, uh.
Sean, I, Sean, I, can I, I just want a final question, and it is based on what you just said, um, isn't that true, the state, the density bonus says that you can't require more than 0.5 parking space per unit?
I believe it's for, um, I'll double check that, I think it's for within, uh, half, uh, within transit.
Yeah, it's, it's within transit adjacency, but it, but it, that's not allowed, that you cannot require more than 0.5 space per unit.
Right, and that may go, I don't know what's gonna happen to 1401, so, I'm, I'm, I'm more addressed, I'm more wanting to, I'm more wanting to have the conversation about the, um, the, we got a letter from someone pointing out that the, we had asked at the, in March, for an analysis of the A lots and the lots that were like A lots, and one of the things that came in in a letter was, uh, some fairly technical discussion about the limitation, the, the parking rules related to the A lots and how they were tied to the adjacent commercial, and so I just wanted to surface that later in discussion, uh, it was, it was in a letter, um, about how that's, there's a limitation on development, so, um, and those may be some of the easier, um, R lots to look at gently to densify. Uh, Nina, Commissioner President?
Um, I just have a question, also based on something you raised, Sean. Um, I understood that the menu of concessions, because it was based on the mods and things that we already have in our code, that they would be based on the same kinds of findings, but they would be approved, I don't understand, is she shaking her head? Is, if we have all these, this menu of concessions that can just, you can get if you need housing, then how, why do we have development standards? It's like, where's the line?
Well, that's the.
Yeah, so, so that's, I think that, that, that's the, um, what, what we were, you know, explaining in the density bonus section, is, you know, that, that, that final slide where we talked at the end of, you know, there, there's sort of the forks in the road, you know, as we're establishing this, you know, if you, if, 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 if the city does not establish, um, FARs, you know, that can accommodate, or, or, or that would make, you know, housing more likely, or can, can support sort of a broader range, um, you know, of housing across, um, zones, you know, it, it opens up sort of that door to, you know, the, the case by case, you know, somewhat unpredictability through incentives and concessions that applicants could submit, to make that project work, to support the onsite affordable, um, you know, the other way to kind of bring back a little bit more control to this, and, you know, to, to give some transparency and predictability to it, so that what you see in the zoning code is actually what people are doing, you know, is to set those standards, you know, at a, at a reasonable level, um, to be able to support, you know, housing and, and the city's inclusionary requirements, um, you know, and, and I think it's just, you know, trying to, to, to figure out like where that line is, you know, because I think as, as you're recognizing, um, you know, going down a road where, you know, you could set something that's sort of, you know, feasible or marginally feasible, you know, you probably may invite, um, you know, more of those opportunities for applicants to, to say like, you know, this doesn't really work for my site, you know, I'm going to request, um, you know, an incentive or concession for this, you know, and, you know, that's, that, that then is sort of a case by case, um, you know, basis for what projects in that manner.
That, I get that, that wasn't actually what I was asking, I'm trying to understand, so you decide, if somebody says, hey, I just can't do my project because I don't have enough density, does that, I mean, how, how, does that mean that you have an opportunity to say, well, actually, you can, or, well, yeah, you could do 30 units and it would be fine, but you wanna do 50 units and that's why you need more density, we don't have to give that to you? How do you decide where the line is?
So, so, yeah, so they submit their request, um, under state density bonus law, right? Um, un, under that government code section, and it's not about them just wanting to have a bigger project, like, it's, it's. And it's not about them just wanting to have a bigger project, like it's, it's what, it, it basically ties back to the level of inclusionary housing, the, the amount of affordable housing they have in their project, and, you know, what they can demonstrate, you know, is, is necessary to support that onsite affordable housing. So that's basically the limit, if you go like that, that's, that, that's the, you know, I'm kind of paraphrasing, but that's the only, you know, requirement, you know, or, or only consideration that the city can, can apply under state law.
So it's a financial standard of proof? Like they have to show you that it doesn't pencil out? And everybody's shaking now. I don't understand what the standards are.
I mean, effectively, you know, and, and, and it's not up, and, and, and the burden of proof is on the city to say, no, you don't need it versus the applicant to prove, you know, to our standard, if that makes sense.
What's an example of a reason we could say no?
So, so the, the, the state law actually says that for incentives and concessions, and so as you, as you saw, Commissioner Reese mentioned waivers of development standards, that's a different standard. The state density bonus law actually has several different things going on all at once. One is the density bonus, and that's kind of this automatic that, that you get when you set aside a certain number of units. Incentives or concessions, as you saw, there's a list of how many you can get. You can get up to four, and the four is only 400% affordable housing projects, but it's between one and three incentives. So that's one check on it, is that you only get a certain number of incentives, you can only get up to three. If you go, if, if the city creates a menu, an applicant could simply choose one of those off the menu and be done with it, or however many they're entitled to and be done with it. There is a separate process that allows you to submit a request to the city. The city looks at it, and the city may say no, but it has to be based on substantial evidence that it would not result in cost reductions for purposes of supporting the affordable housing onsite.
So that's what I ask, so it's a financial standard, basically, that's what we have to analyze.
But can I say something? That, that is only if they go off the list.
I understand that, but I wanted to understand the outside limit and how we decide where the end of the series of requests is. You know, there's like steps that you can go along, and there has to be some end to the line, and it appears to be a feasibility analysis. Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we, do we have a very patient public waiting to comment, or where are we with that?
We have one of three callers in the queue currently.
Okay, let's e, can we email the other two again, and then let's hear from the first person?
Okay, our one and only caller in the queue so far is Tina Grossman. Tina, you are now off mute, thank you for your patience, and you have three minutes for your comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great, um, I'm calling to comment on the ADU features. There's a specific aspect to the city council's directive on March 31st where they had mentioned that they would be interested in restrictions, deed restrictions. I'd like to have that thoroughly fleshed out, and I'd like to know why, you know, and a homeowner interested in building an ADU would agree to having a deed restriction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the caller? Okay, uh, any luck with the other two callers?
They are not with us yet, but they did just receive a final last chance email, so maybe just give them a few seconds just in case.
We've been at this for three hours. I'm going to suggest that we take a five-minute break to give them a chance to decide to change their minds. And if they're not in the queue when we get back at 8:30, we'll, we'll just jump into conversation. See it at, see it at 8:30. All right, hoping we can bring back the other four of us, or three of us.
I'm going to have to eat my popsicle, I'm sorry. I'm here.
Yeah, okay, we're good. And, and I, we know, I, we will have, I'm hoping that we have some luck with our callers. Melissa?
We do have one who joined us. Are we ready?
Let's hear from our caller.
Okay, our caller is Dave Rand. Dave, you are now off mute. Welcome to the meeting, you have three minutes for your comments.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Terrific, good evening Commissioners, Dave Rand with Armstrong, Goldsmith and Delvac. Good to see you tonight. I've been listening intently on this conversation, a, a topic near and dear to my heart, which is the state density bonus law. And my initial impressions, I have to say, are of significant concern. What I'm hearing is that the standards relative to the city's affordable housing requirements today don't work and are infeasible. We know that from HRNA's well-documented analysis. What I'm hearing is there was an opportunity to potentially achieve some feasibility through the density bonus implementation program, but yet the recommendation has been to do it in such a way where we are establishing the bonuses on the lowest possible base, providing a buried density bonus to essentially nowhere. What I'm hearing is that we'll use Chapter 9.43 as the menu of incentives that are intended to incent developers to actually stay within the system, stay on the menu, as opposed to going off-menu and asking for unlimited development rights. Chapter 9.43, which establishes a 10% deviation from the landscape requirements, a four, four-foot increase in the maximum floor-to-floor height requirement. This is not how we're going to get to feasibility. There are a couple of ways we can fix this. They're not new or novel, other cities have done them. You can apply the density bonus, uh, uh, FAR, translate the, the, the density bonus under the state law to an FAR increase, apply it to the tier one plus housing current base and the tier two. Other cities have local bonus programs that they add to their base and then apply the state, state density bonus law benefits on top of that. West Hollywood has a base FAR. They regulate things the same way you do in Santa Monica. They then have a local mixed-use bonus. They then apply the density bonus on top of that. It's on top of their stacked base density. Culver City, although they regulate by density, have a low base density. They then have localized community benefits, which pumps you up. And then they apply the state density bonus on top of that, the maximum. Why? Because that's really the ultimate base density, the maximum development rights allowed by the local jurisdiction, not the commercial FARs that are depressed to 1.25. The city of Los Angeles has overlay programs that establish a base FAR through the zoning, that give you additional development rights if you say do underground parking, and then the density bonus of benefits apply on top of that. That's how you'll get to feasibility. I don't know why we're not embracing this as a strategy for housing production. I'll add that AB 2345, which went into effect this year, strengthens the state's enforcement mechanism against cities that filed the state density bonus law. April 1st of every year, cities are now required to report to HCD and OPR how many density bonus applications were filed?
Thank you, that has been three minutes.
How many menus and concessions have been approved? Guy, you don't have nothing to report, because no one's going to take this deal and, 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 and work within the system that's being proposed tonight.
Okay, I see a question for you, Mr. Rand.
Mr. Rand, do you have a suggestion of what a base density would be that would be more feasible, or some other way to change the base density to make it feasible?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a two-step approach. And forgive me if I, it maybe got a little convoluted, but, and it's essentially what West Hollywood does, and it's applied to Santa Monica's tier system. So keep the, let's go with the MUDL, that was the recommended, the example in the staff report. So right now you have a 1.5 with housing bonus at tier one with 10% affordable. Apply a 32.5% FAR increase, which Ms. Yao showed you on the chart, correlates to a 10% very low income. That will give you a FAR bonus at that level with 10%. Apply the corresponding FAR increase at tier two, where you have a 15% VLI requirement and a tier two FAR of 1.75. Apply the 50% FAR increase or density bonus, which you would be allowed under the state law by doing 15% very low income to that upper level. So you, you essentially calibrated your two-tier system to the density bonuses that would be allowed under a 10% VLI offering and a 15% VLI offering at tier two, and translated that to FAR. Now I'll tell you how West Hollywood calculates base density. Several of you have asked, how do you calculate a base density on an FAR height envelope-based development system? So this is going to be dangerous lawyers doing math, but let's say, let's use my example of tier two in the MUDL, base FAR of 1.75 at tier two with 15% affordable. 1.75 with a 50% density bonus gets you to 2.6 FAR. And let's say in the, in that envelope, and you need to marry that with a menu of concessions that include height increases that allow you to actually utilize this FAR, that's not going to, you're not going to get there with Chapter 9.4.3. So let's say that, that density bonus gets you 100 units in your post-density bonus envelope. You back out 1.50 FAR, divide 100 by 1.50, that's backing out the 50% FAR increase, and you have a base density of 67 units. Okay, so instead of applying the 15% on the 100 total, you apply it on the 67. So instead of 15 on 100, it's 15 on 67, 11 units. So you now have a key system to the density bonus law, and you have a base density. It's the, how the city of West Hollywood does it. I'm not making it up, other jurisdictions have, have managed to do this, and I think the city of Santa Monica could do it as well without having to step it down to the lowest level where it's not going to actually get you it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Rand, you're speaking about West Hollywood's density bonus program. I'm curious if you have any insight into the, the number of developers that utilize the commercial density bonus for providing off-site affordable units in West Hollywood? Whether if that's a popular program, how often it's used, any insights into that?
Um, I, I don't have any insights relative to West Hollywood. I do know there's a statute that allows you to obtain a commercial FAR bonus in exchange for providing off-site affordable housing. Essentially, if a commercial developer wants to get more commercial FAR, they can partner with like a nonprofit affordable provider and fund an affordable housing project. That's, that's in, in the state code. No one, to my knowledge, has ever used it. I think the statute's actually expiring this year. It's been pretty worthless because it's been proven to be unworkable. It would be great if Santa Monica could figure out how to do something like that, but I, I have not seen it work in, in my practice.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
I have a question, actually, we discussed this the other day, Dave. You indicated that the city of LA has a list of concessions that are essentially by right or ministerial. Can you share that with us at some point?
Sure, I, I'd be happy to. Just to give you the highlights, you get a one-story 11-foot height increase on the city of LA's on-menu incentives. You can get either a 35% FAR increase- Um, you can get either a 35% FAR increase, or you can get a double thing of FAR in certain districts if you're near transit. Uh, you can get yard reductions, you can get relief from transitional height, so I'd be happy to provide that. But the key there is that those incentives on that menu are real. They're actually, they actually are incentives. They incense developers to take them and stay on the menu and have that more streamlined process rather than going off the menu, which is more burdensome. You have to go to the City Planning Commission, you have to produce some economic analysis on occasion. So oftentimes, if the incentives and concessions are meaningful, developers will take that path of least resistance rather than get aggressive and venture into a more risky process. But the key is they have to be realistic and viable. Otherwise, no one will use them and it'll be the Wild West of density bonus applications, and every developer will be coming in for god knows what, whatever they think they want, and no predictability, no certainty, no transparency.
Is, is bedroom mix on that list?
Uh, the city of LA does not have a bedroom, um, unit, uh, mixed requirement, so no.
Thank you.
So no unit mix requirement yet. You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Rand. So now we are going to, our public, our third public commenter never showed up, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment, public hearing, um, and I have a message that we have a commissioner who has a hard stop at 9:30. Um, Jim, are you able to bring up the kind of table of contents for our, uh, discussions? In the interest of time, and I hope this is workable for staff, what I'm thinking is that we ought to, rather than going subject matter by subject matter, um, we ought to give, uh, yeah, this is great. Uh, we ought to give each commissioner an opportunity to comment however they like on each of these items, and then I want to, um, I wanna go over what we have from, uh, that was added to the list, uh, which is adaptive reuse, uh, ADU streamlining over the counter approval, ARB streamlining, um, homeownership and R1 zoning are already covered. Preservation of rent-controlled housing is not on this list. Uh, rental assistance programs and emergency homeless housing supply and parking. Um, so I'm having a little hard time, let me see if I can see everybody, but how would you all feel if we just went around commissioner by commissioner and you say what you want on these items plus the ones, plus whatever else? But I just wanna make sure that, you know, you all know what we said we wanted to cover. That work for everybody? Okay, will you permit me to, uh, start with Commissioner Pastor so that Gaff can hear from her before we lose her? Great, Alyssa.
Uh, thank you Chair, and thank you to the commission, and I'm sorry that I have a hard stop tonight, but I do. Um, I'll go one by one, some things I don't really have much to say about. Um, the update on the approach for implementing Option B, actually, wait, let me pull up my notes, my job report. Um, I don't think I have much to say about that. I mean, I, I am really concerned about accommodating housing and if we have not traditionally accommodated it in, and so I thought it was very useful for Commissioner Lambert to talk about the lot sites and sunset parks. So I'd like us to take a look at that a little bit more. Um, I understand that there is concern about changing the character of our single-family neighborhoods, and I'm not advocating for that, but I am, I think that there is a way to have multiple units in a single-family zone and still maintain the character. So, um, I think that is through, um, ADUs and other things, and so I'd like to see that, um, certainly looked at and the feasibility of that looked at. I thought it was interesting that staff also said something about the feasibility that land costs in R1 zones were more. Um, so if that is really the case, then I guess we really need to look at that. Um, I basically agree with almost everything that Dave Rand just said about the density bonus structure. He and I spent a long time talking about this the other day, and I think he articulated it really, really well. I am really concerned that if we stick with this base density of 1.25, if you're just getting a, a bonus on top of something and it's still not feasible, and so, you know, 100% or 50% of zero is still zero. And so, if, if in fact we can only, which I, is right, right? We can only count the base densities for arena allocation, then I actually think that it is better to increase our base FAR because that gives us more for arena than it does to start with a lower FAR and have these big densities. Um, I have experience in Culver City with the, the local bonus and then the, so there it's, you know, uh, an increase in the DU per acre from 35 to 50, and then from, you take the density bonus on top of the 50, I think it works. Um, I think their new ordinance may have some feasibility issues, quite honestly, but I, I think if we are trying to do this thing where we wanna try to, I, I mean, there's part of me that just thinks we should get rid of the tiers altogether, and so I guess that is, um, perhaps very difficult here. And so I think this compromise of doing the density bonus on top of Tier 1 housing and then essentially on top of the Tier 2 is kind of the way around that. I'd really like us to see that. I don't think, I mean, I don't think it's that complicated to change the FAR to unit. Um, and it's just math and we should just do it. I also agree that the city of Los Angeles on-menu and off-menu density bonus system works really pretty well, and it's pretty straightforward, and it also makes it easier for staff, right? It makes the approval process faster, um, it incentivized real housing, and I think it works. And I, in some ways, I think we have made this density bonus question just like entirely too complicated. I actually don't think it's that complicated. Um, prioritizing 100% affordable housing, so, um, I really like that we are looking at city-owned sites. I like that we are looking at the, um, the lots of religious congregations. I would like us to, to see for sites that are, um, I think Jim has got a really good point about we should, the reality is that a lot of the folks who live in that housing is, are going to use transit um, on a more frequent basis, and so we certainly should make that as easy as possible. 1763 already exists, but to the extent that we need to add those, um, incentives to city-owned sites and religious congregations, we should do that. Um, something we have not really talked about tonight is the, um, uh, the moderate income housing, the sort of 80% to 120%, and I really liked the proposal in the staff report that talks about having a moderate income density bonus. I would respectfully disagree with, uh, I think it was the Rent Commission who says, well, it's just more market rate housing, but if we, right, we don't wanna be a city that, I mean, like, God willing, you know, we're gonna get thousands of affordable units built, and so then are we gonna be a place that has a bunch of affordable housing and a bunch of really wealthy housing and nothing in between? Like, we can't be that, I don't wanna be that city. And so, 80 to 100%, it's not just market rate housing. It's the people, right, that are, are teachers, and I mean, this is an old story. It's our teachers, it's our firefighters, it's people who make pretty good salaries that kind of people live in our city, and those are people's kids, right, and I want those people in our city. So, um, it, it didn't come up tonight, but I wanna help staff that I'm very, very into it, and I appreciate that, um, that you were looking at that, and I like the way, um, I like the way that you structured it here. And, and that also, getting that type of housing is also, um, I think you can really use this sort of two-tiered density bonus, right? That you have a local density bonus and then a state density bonus, and so, um, perhaps that is one of the ways that you, you use, um, the moderate income housing, that's for that. Um, I don't really have anything to say about, besides what I've already said about R1 zones, except for I am really worried about our affirmatively furthering fair housing, and I'm doing a hard time wrapping my head around if we are not going to use some light densification of some of the places where we have, where redline is happening, how we can possibly meet that standard. You know, I, I am really worried that we would be out of compliance with that. Um, I'm troubled by what I heard and what I read in the staff report about home ownership opportunities. Um, it sounds like that's a really difficult issue. I don't have the answer to that, you know, Leslie, maybe you have some better ideas. Sounds like down payment assistance is one, although where does that money come from? So, I mean, I think that's unfortunate. I'm not sure what to do about that. Um, and I think I went back and looked at the minutes and some of the hearing, and I, I think that Santa Monica Forward's letter that talks about what the council was saying in terms of densifying a more inclusionary, I think we really need to pay attention to that. I, I, um, think perhaps the mischaracterization in the staff report, maybe that was accidental or it was read incorrectly, but I, I think if we look at the record, what Santa Monica Forward has said in this letter is correct. And, um, I wanna see us, um, promoting all types of housing. Um, I may have forgotten something, but that's what I've got for right now. Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything on the additional items? Adaptive reuse, ADUs, preservation, parking?
Um, I do love the, what city of LA did in terms of the model ADU program. I think it's got something that we could potentially use here to encourage ADUs. That'd be great. Um, I don't have much to, I mean, in terms of adaptive reuse, I, I mean, what I hear is that there's some floor-to-floor issues, and I'd love to see adaptive reuse of, of some of those buildings for housing if, um, our, either our production folks or our architects or whoever tell us that that's, you know, really feasible. What was last one, Sean?
Uh, parking.
Um, I think park, you know, I think we should use parking lots as housing and put the parking underground and make it public parking. It's expensive, and if we have the right densities, I think it works. And there's other cities that have done that a lot, and they have public parking in, um, in the bottom of buildings, and we can also have shared parking for that, and we shouldn't have surface parking lots. And in those, in those parking lots, we should also have EV chargers.
From all kinds of providers. Okay, uh, we started with questions with Commissioner Fondabarnati, so I'm gonna circle back to Commissioner Reese and we'll work backwards. Um, so Jim, thank you, Commissioner.
Great. Okay, um, going down this list, I am supportive of Option B. I think that, you know, this is something I, I had fought for during the loose and, and lost terribly, so it's great to see the city going in that direction. I do also think, um, you know, one of the other options that we had on the table was around transit stations, and I don't really want us to lose sight of that. I think it's, I think it's important. I wanna be respectful of historic racist policies in the, in the, in the city and throughout our state, but again, transit is a, we've put a lot of money into the transit, and there's people who use it more frequently than others, and we should try to take advantage of that. I think that, I have a lot of problems with the structure. Try to clean it up. I think that, um, I mean, as I alluded to, it's, it's so odd that density bonus is written for units, density, not floor area, and arena numbers are written for units. But we're working in floor area, so it makes our life much more complicated. I do think that Mr. Rand had a, a pretty simple, uh, solution. If we're not gonna, you know, rewrite the, our whole density bonus ordinance, um, Mr. Rand's solution would work. I think the LA incentives are, are very tried and true, and, and this, this staff is, is overworked. Why would you guys go ahead and try to recreate the wheel when you have that that has been very effective? I do really urge you to consider using a additional incentive, which is 20% to any standard. I see that as being really helpful for a lot of my affordable clients because you just never know on a project what you're going to need. It's impossible to anticipate. Um, and then also I think Commissioner Raskin was talking a little bit about trees, and how can we, how can we incentivize protecting mature trees on our site? And it could be a way through this, this on-menu incentive program as well. Um, so I'm very supportive of that. 100% overlay throughout the city, I think, makes, I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm not quite sure that's what number four is, is, that's not what number four is talking to, I take it back. Number four is just about city sites. I think putting city sites up obviously shows that we're serious about this and we should continue down that path. Um, I think Commissioner, Ex-Commissioner Anderson pointed out, is prioritizing really a strong enough word? And should we find another word that actually is, is stronger, that it focuses the housing on these sites? So we should, I don't know if we have a conversation about that. Um, obviously, parking lots of all types should be looked at. And for a long time I have been, let's try to get rid of all of the parking structures. I did allude to a project that I did on Pico Boulevard near Robinson. It was a parking lot that had 21 parking spaces on it. Today, there are 49 affordable units and 40, and 48 replacement parking spaces. That's a great model. With that said, I will highlight that the COVID world taught me that parking lots are not the worst thing in the world. Those large parking lots that were used to vaccinate people were invaluable. Um, so there, I do see some value in that now, but, but I do think that we can use most of ours for densifying the R1 zone is, is really a complicated issue, but I think we need to look at it. I think that we have such monster houses that are already permitted. You could easily put one or two units in there and the community really wouldn't know the difference. Um, but obviously we'll have to tread a little lightly on that, but I do encourage us to explore it. Homeownership opportunities. I, I think they're problematic. I sat on a CCSM homeownership panel 18 years ago. We had an idea for the project across from Edison. It never materialized because they couldn't get the financing for it. So not only do you have the issue of trying to find people who will finance it, but then on the back end, people either A, lose track of the covenants that say you can't sell it for more than a certain amount, um, or they just get angry that they can't sell it for a certain amount. I think we have more bang for our buck. I think it was put pretty well by one of the council members that we'll get a lot more bang for our buck with affordable units as opposed to the affordable housing. Um, steps towards compliant, you know, I think this takes us closer to compliance with the housing element. I do think in this, we're gonna have to look at some upzoning. No, the city is not overly excited about that. But the 1.25 on the boulevards, not only do I, do I think we have concerns with, that's actually downzoning, but it's proven that that just doesn't work in our city. Um, so why we would think that would be the, the place to start, I, I just disagree with and urge staff to, to be a little more aggressive there. I don't remember all of the other items on the list. We talked about parking. I, I think I've already mentioned parking that I'm all for, trying to utilize lots. Um, obviously maintaining people in their homes, forget the term we were using for it, but is very important. I will point out, I do not think that is actually part of a required element of a housing element. I think it's important, but it's not an absolute requirement of a housing element. Um, and it is something that this city does quite well. Though where city has, the city staff has to apply their focus. It should be on, and doing a compliant housing element and all of the parts that go into it. Sean, I can't remember what else is on that list, though. Hold on.
ADUs, um, preservation.
Yeah, I saw it, preserve, okay. ADUs, I, I'm very supportive of that and the way to, you know, I don't know that that's gonna solve our problem. I think we heard today that A, people aren't really telling us how we're gonna get the income information, and the little information we have from looking on the open market, they're going for market rate. I mean, of course, if they're I mean, of course, if they're, they're putting them out there on, on the websites for everybody, there, it's going to be market rate. So I don't know how much affordability we get out of it, but I think there's a lot of value from family members living in this, whether it's your son or your parent. You know, I see that a lot more in my neighborhood and neighborhood. We have three, three generations living in properties. It's, it's fairly special to have that and I would love to see that elsewhere in the, in the city. I know I have other comments, but I can't think of them right now.
We'll circle back.
I'll be quiet.
Uh, Commissioner Raskin.
Thank you. Um, yeah, starting off with, uh, you know, our, our general approach for citing housing in the city. You know, I, I do think it's important to approach, to approach this from, from a perspective of equity and social justice and you know, the reality is that, uh, with the status quo, we've seen considerable gentrification, especially in the Pico neighborhood and other historically redlined areas. Um, um, and, uh, we really need to be cognizant of the effects of ongoing gentrification from whatever approach we take. Um, I, I think I might be the only renter on the planning commission, but, uh, you know, over the last five years, uh, in the Pico neighborhood, there has been considerable turnover in the historically rent controlled, uh, housing stock, uh, and, uh, again, we just seem to be very, very cognizant of that, um, whatever approach the city takes. Um, for density bonuses, yeah, uh, again, to reiterate, to the extent that we can incentivize uh, preserving resources like, like trees or other public goods, like maybe even preserving uh, rent controlled housing units, uh, in exchange for some sort of uh, density bonus that allows for an equivalent number of, of units to be built in, uh, otherwise undevelopable portions of, of, uh, of a lot, then we should, we should consider that too. Um, but the reality is that I think that whatever, um, you know, many of options we take really have to be very site specific and allow for a flexibility in the, in the site conditions that, uh, will get us to our affordable housing goals. Um, and yeah, again, too, also, uh, jumping back a little bit to, to item number one, uh, you know, uh, consistent with the, the loose process we've already been through as a community, uh, that's been run out, uh, we do need to think about promoting developments in transit rich corridors, uh, along boulevards. Um, with respect to the affordable housing overlay, um, I, I'm generally in, in favor of that. Uh, with respects to promoting a hundred percent affordable housing on, on city owned sites, absolutely. I think that this is, this is really a key component of our approach moving forward. Um, and, uh, that said, I have some concerns about some of the specific sites. Uh, I have some concerns about, uh, the Burgovat Arts Center, um, in, included in this. Um, I, I think that, um, um, uh, we, we need to, um, really, uh, work hand in hand with the, uh, uh, arts community in the city, um, before opening up that can of worms. Um, I have some concerns too about, uh, potential surplus land act compliance with respect to some of the sites, but I'm, I'm confident that we can work around that. Um, then with respect to R1 zones, I mean, one thing we, we haven't really talked about, um, is the fact that, uh, the, the single demographic that's at greatest risk of eviction, uh, at least over the last year have been people who rent single family homes. And to a large extent, that is because there are very few protections for people who rent those, those types of properties. Um, but again, we need to be cognizant of how, um, the approach of, uh, locked splits and densifying our R1 neighborhoods are going to, uh, uh, have an impact on, on people who rent from single family homes. And perhaps thinking about adding those development proposals to protections, uh, for those types of renters to the extent that that's feasible. Um, I, with item number six, I agree, uh, wholeheartedly with our colleagues on the rent board, uh, who've made some really, really important, uh, comments on this issue. Uh, to the extent that there is financing available for down payment assistance, uh, I, I would advocate that that should be redirected, uh, towards, uh, paying, uh, uh, rents instead or having some sort of emergency rental assistance fund. And, um, a, apropos of that, I, I mean, it, it, I, I struggle really with the fact that, you know, given development costs for, for, uh, for units and we absolutely need to solve our supply and demand problem. But for the cost of developing one unit, you can give 12 families $500 a month to offset their rent. So there's a real, uh, we really need to think too about, uh, how, how we're directing our, uh, uh, funds effectively. Um, with respect to some of the other issues, adaptive reuse, um, yeah, to the extent it's feasible and to the extent that we can catch it towards our, our arena numbers, absolutely, uh, ADUs, um, um, I don't have anything to add from what's been said already. Um, I, I do want to really add, add one point though, which is that one of the things that, that, um, the housing element law encourages cities to look at is uh, whether housing for homeless individuals is adequate. And, um, I, I know that there has been a long ongoing discussion in the city about, uh, our, our emergency homeless, uh, uh, facilities. And Chair Landris has been through that conversation, uh, extensively through the Social Services Commission and um, I do hope that, uh, as part of this process, we'll be able to reflect upon whether we're really doing everything we can to, uh, provide emergency, uh, housing for those who are, who are most in need. Uh, and I think if the city council is, is, is on the right approach with some of the creative, uh, interventions that they've been looking at recently. And, um, I'll, I'll, I'll close it there.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Okay. Um, update on approach to implement option B. I mean, clearly option B is the preferred approach. Um, but I think it's really important to be surgical in this. And to rely solely on the redlining map of long ago is probably not the best way to do our planning. Um, and the reason I say that is that, um, redlining today is not from financial institutions of the federal government. It's from the price, pricing. Um, the segregation we see in Santa Monica is because of price. Um, the other point is Ocean Park was a notoriously redlined area and it is now one of the most desirable and costly neighborhoods on the west side of LA. So avoiding Ocean Park because it was redlined doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It's also important to know that north of Wilshire, which was not redlined, um, has 40% of the rent control housing stock in the city. So I think we have to be very surgical in terms of what we do, and that's clearly between Wilshire and Montana, uh, what we do in that neighborhood. Um, I also agree with, uh, Commissioner Reese that I, I really want to see transit oriented development to the extent we can. Um, to propose density bonus structure, I support what Mr. Rand submitted. I think that our current system is almost incomprehensible and, um, is a deterrent to developers coming in and building houses and housing, which is what we're about. So I would hope that we could just, just basically adopt the state density bonus program for, for the city. It could be done, uh, with an FAR. It's done in West Hollywood and other cities in the, in the states. So it's very doable. I also want to see a ministerial menu of concessions. Um, so that a developer hasn't done, doesn't have to go through a financial analysis or potentially to court to get a concession that's necessary to build his or her project. Um, the affordable housing overlay, I sup, I support the concept. Um, have concerns, um, have grave doubts about whether we're, if it were only for a hundred percent affordable housing, whether we're going to see it in R1 district. Uh, we have an overlay district already citywide for a hundred percent affordable project. That's from AP 1763. So we, we have bonuses for affordable housing except in R1. And the reason I, I'm skeptical is that the land prices, for example, north of Montana are comparable to those in our commercial corridors. Um, so to, to make an affordable housing project feasible north of Montana, you would have to build at the same density that you would be building on Broadway or Colorado. And I'm not really sure how feasible from many standpoints that is. What I would like to see is affordable housing overlay, um, consideration for moderate income housing. At this point, the city has no incentives whatsoever to build moderate income housing. And that's a, that's a, a major gap in our housing market. And as someone pointed out, these are people who are teachers, they're SMC and, and school district, um, administrative workers, et cetera. There's a huge demand for moderate income housing that we're not needing. So I would like to see an AHA that's actually limited to moderate income housing. Um, I don't think doing a hundred percent affordable housing, and it's not because I particularly care about the, the neighborhood preservation argument, is I don't think it's feasible north of Montana. And Sunset Park strangely has about 3,400 rent controlled housing units itself. So there's a good deal of multifamily housing in, in Sunset Park. Uh, I agree totally with prioritizing a hundred percent affordable housing on city owned sites. I'm not sure, given the surplus land act, that we really have any choice. Um, it either, I think it has to be offered first for affordable housing as second, or at the same time for parks. So that's, that's, I think it's a given. Um, parking lots or religious congregations, I think that's an excellent idea and I want to see it pursued. Uh, densifying R1 zones, I would like to see, um, us allowed two to four units in R1. Um, and I think as somebody pointed out, the existing, uh, envelopes of, of these huge homes that we're seeing in, in our neighborhoods could easily accommodate two to four units and you wouldn't know the difference from the street. Um, so I really think that you could maybe modify a bit the development standards in R1 to accommodate two to four units. But whether we provide would be, um, not homeownership opportunities that are affordable to low and moderate income, but they would be a lot more affordable than those, than the single family houses in the neighborhoods now. Uh, homeownership is a sticky wicket. I've done it professionally and I know that someone pointed out that when people come to sell their units, they forget the promises they made about, um, you know, selling them so they continue to be affordable. There's, there's a conflict between wealth accumulation, which homeownership, um, is about, and actually protecting the affordability of that homeowner unit. And they're, they're kind of mutually exclusive. So I think it's, it's a, yeah, put that given the real estate prices in Santa Monica, it's probably not going to be happening. That said, I, and I, I guess I could disagree with the rent control board in this sense. Looking at a limited equity colot model for some of our rental buildings, I think might be worth pursuing. Um, and steps toward compliance with the housing element, I don't think there's any way around or we're going to have to upzone, given all the other things I've said. Um, and I think that we need to decide where and how much that's appropriate. Um, I also need, uh, just to emphasize, when we actually come to the achievable housing production required under the, uh, rent of goals, we need to understand that the only thing, we cannot count units of, we produce with adaptive reuse, density bonuses or an affordable housing overlay district because there's no way to anticipate that. So it's the base zoning of the site. The units that that site can accommodate, only those that have to be included in the housing element. ADUs are the exception. But I think while we're looking at ADUs, we also have to consider, and I know in my neighborhood, this is pretty common, that a lot of ADUs are not being rented at all. They're being kept for family use or personal use or home offices or what have you. So, um, and there's no way to know how much, how prevalent that is, but it is a reality. And then I have a few other issues. Um, I think that the housing element should address more than we have seen the need for permanent supportive housing in Santa Monica and how we intend to achieve that. Um, if we really want to address homelessness issues, that, that is clearly the housing model that works. I think we need to see more of it. I would also like to see the bedroom mix for market rate housing removed. Um, I think we have come to realize that requiring three bedroom units in market rate projects does not mean that families will live there. What it generally means is the three individuals, uh, will. Um, families, if they can afford that kind of rent, are likely to buy a house somewhere outside of Santa Monica. Um, I, I, I support having no minimum parking requirements throughout the city. But I think we also need to understand the impact on adjacent residential neighborhoods if we do that. And, and I don't have an answer for that. Um, but it is, uh, it's something we need to look at. Oh, and I, I have another issue. Um, and then that goes to the SSI. Um, I have a real problem with counting a hundred percent entitled projects toward meeting the rent goal in the housing element. Cause I think that level of confidence that they're all going to proceed to building permits is probably not well founded. And the reason I say that is I know of at least three projects that are entitled that are in trouble because they can't get density bonuses. So if that, if that becomes a trend or if there are other projects that may fall through, we need to acknowledge that. But I think we need to have a discount factor applied to the entitled projects for accounting, uh, toward housing element compliance. And that's it.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Fusco.
Alrighty. Uh, I think option B is going well, but as I expressed earlier, uh, I have reservations about, uh, a hundred percent affordable housing behind Main Street because of its neighborhood. It's just too solid a block and I really believe that in inclusionary housing or if it's in a hundred percent housing affordable building, that it be, uh, within a neighborhood that is mixed and that different people live together and a mix of socio economic levels within a neighborhood is the optimal ideal. And given that, uh, what people have been saying about not excluding or excluding Ocean Park because of its redlined history. Um, Ocean Park has many, many affordable housing buildings in it already. And we are a mixed socio economic neighborhood here and, uh, I think the idea for, uh, this social justice uh, provision is to mix different socio and economic levels. Not every level can be possible in every neighborhood, but to add new groups to neighborhoods where they were previously excluded. So I do not agree that Ocean Park, uh, belongs in the mix in a, uh, incentivized way. We already do our share here and I think that there are other neighborhoods that need the mix. Um, the density bonus structure, uh, my questions, I was trying to get to the bottom of exactly how that uh, final level of request is vetted and, uh, on what basis and, um, I agree with what, uh, Dave Rand was saying and what staff also said, which is that we really need to make sure that our zoning accommodates a feasible structure that allows us to get the kinds of housing we want. Um, just as a reminder, um, uh, our tier system was developed so that we could get community benefits from projects as they got bigger. So, uh, the reason that we would like to see, I mean, the original reason for seeing a gradation of project sizes and incentives with the tiers was the more they got, the more they would give back in theory. So I, it may not be workable with all of these newly complicated things, but it was a good idea in the beginning anyway. Um, uh, density bonus affordable housing, uh, uh, I agree with things I've heard about moderate income housing and, uh, the overlay does not need to apply to R1. For example, um, by allowing, uh, light upzoning in R1, we are, um, by allowing up, uh, light upzoning in R1, we're making way for a difference in affordability than there is now, and it would be incremental and we don't need to do go to extreme measures in order to try and get very affordable housing there when it wouldn't succeed anyway. And, uh, as far as prioritizing affordable housing on city owned sites, I think it's a great idea. Most of them are scattered throughout the city and I think it would be a really great idea to, um, put them and put those kinds of projects in all different places on the city owned sites. Um, parking lots too, uh, what Jim said about having dumb large parking lots and wide open spaces in our city would be useful. Uh, in the case this pandemic never ends, God forbid, um, uh, densifying R1, like I said, I think it needs to be done lightly. I think there are benefits to R1. Uh, I think the, uh, racist people who conceived it had, uh, did create I think the racist people who conceived it had, did create a garden streetscape and an environment where huge tree canopies flourish and are pleasant places for even people who don't live there to walk and have a different experience on the street. And I think all of those things are valuable. And so as we densify R1, I would hope that development standards and so forth would help preserve that streetscape character. I would of course predictably like to see that we no longer allow fence variances and that they stay low in order to keep that open streetscape. I think fences are racist and keeping others out, whether it's other races or other socioeconomic classes, they're not what we want or need. In terms of homeownership opportunities, I think that there's a really interesting and important opportunity with homeownership in terms of social justice reparations and in the idea of assisting families who missed their chance in the 1930s with FHA when they didn't get those great federally insured mortgages when property was cheap. I don't think we have the means to do that and it's not really something that's realistic, but I think it's something that I would be interested in. Steps towards compliance, I think the main thing we really need to do is some careful upzoning of our boulevards so that, I mean, I really think that's where the meat and the potatoes of these, of meeting the RENA is going to happen. That's where there's the most opportunity with the least impact. And it wouldn't change our char, the character of our city. It would just more housing, which is always good. As for ADUs, as I have said many times before, I'm very skeptical about their ability to help us get to where we need adding more units, because I think a lot of people do use them for their own purposes. I wish I could build an ADU and my son, who's graduating from college on Friday, would move back into it, but he's not going to. But I don't think that they are the answer. I think that it's fine to keep, well, we have to keep them there, but I just don't think we're going to get that much out of them. More units is always good. Not every unit, I mean, I know we have a really high burden for adding affordable units, but every unit we add places somebody who could be displacing another unit that's affordable. So all units are good, so ADUs and I, the term for R1 lot split does make me uncomfortable because I feel like that could degrade the garden character. So I believe in unit split and multiple units and not necessarily a lot slip, a lot split kind of a building form. Now I'm just looking at my notes for a second. I think I've covered most of this. Oh, and I mentioned, I was very disturbed to see that, I mean, I know the list of city-owned sites and what their potential could be was a math exercise and not necessarily a proposal, but including a designated structure of merit on there with a note as to how long you would have to wait until you could demolish it, I believe is not part of the basic premise of our identifying suitable sites. And I think that that site should be removed. Oh, and in terms of, I think that as we look at densifying or upzoning or adding more FAR or all that kind of stuff, boulevards, I think it might be an opportunity to look at onsite open space. I've often felt that our requirements lead to very puffed up sort of hollow buildings and that we could get more out of our buildings and get more units and so forth if we thought about open space being out in the open and not so much in the middle of donut-shaped buildings. And I think that is, that's everything I have. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fondabene.
Okay. We'll go very quickly here. I think option B is the way to go. I like what Commissioner Fresco said about amping up if anything, just the boulevards. I think that is a valuable way to go. The density bonus structure, I think, is problematic for the reasons that have been mentioned. But one of the real, the real fundamental problems is that when you look at the path to producing 6,000 affordable units, and if you go down the inclusionary house path, inclusionary unit path, that's a very, very basically, you have to build 30,000 units to get your 6,000. And that's an unsustainable, let's say, path forward. So the $64,000 question here is the 64, $6.4 billion question is, 6,000 units are going to need a subsidy. And that subsidy has to come from somewhere. And it would be much more productive in a funny sort of way for us to be talking about how to leverage the money we might have for affordable housing rather than talk about units. You know, we should have RENA numbers based on a $500,000 subsidy, a $1 trillion subsidy. Give us a number or series of numbers and we'll tell you how many units we can build. And I think that was, what was interesting about the approach that the staff was taking in terms of density bonus structure, they attack it from both ways. We're only attacking it from number of units, but the real question, the missing discussion is how much is the subsidy going to cost at all levels? Meaning the subsidy, the infrastructure, the subsidies for the, all the different upgrades that are going to have to happen to all the different systems. So anyway, I guess what I'm saying is the density bonus structure, this idea that you can take a density bonus and build a sandwich and have a triple deck and keep piling it on, piling it on. I looked at that map that showed 11 and eight-story buildings in our city. I find that horrible. I think it's horrifying. It's horrible because it's not who our city is and it's absolutely unsustainable because we can't build sustainable buildings over three stories. That's a given fact right now. When we get to four-story with technology, that extra power we're going to get is going to have to go to our electric cars. Anyway, this is a kind of completely unsustainable approach to things and it's all based on basically unattainable goals. And we keep twisting ourselves into pretzels and trying to make it work and it's not going to work and it's going to fail. So, you know, it's just a question of giving to the state in this case, a thing that's reasonably credible, knowing that it's not going to fall and it's not going to work. And so we're really trying to make it reasonably credible and contain the damage, the damage to our city. Affordable housing overlay has to be 100% affordable. It could be stretched out over the whole city and I just, where the transit distances are, but you know, that's really a kind of almost academic, because where's the money to build that? Likewise, I'd look for absolutely city-owned lots. Another way of saying that you can reduce the cost, the subsidy needed by essentially giving away free land, or not giving it away, keep title to it, but give the use away. And so it helps in a subsidy form, sort of format. Parking lots of religious congregations, underutilized resource, definitely, definitely go there. It actually might even help the religious congregations get some rent, which are, you know, endangered species often. Identifying R1 zones, we already have that ability. We have basically the ADU. And the ADU is a perfect way to preserve the character of the R1 zones. It's got junior ADUs. And right now, the ADUs are held to 1,100 square feet. You know, our city could go up to 1,500 square feet, make it even so you could get four, three or four-bedroom apartments, houses in the back of those lots. Exploring homeownership opportunities, I think co-ops are the only way to protect that opportunity and also meet those two conflicting goals. One is letting the middle class have some housing and B, keeping everybody from speculating on that housing. And steps toward compliance of the housing element, well, we're on those steps. We're working our way there. Three other things I would like to add. One is I think we're underestimating the horsepower of ADUs. We need to let them happen and take their natural shape. I absolutely agree with the person who said that even if someone is just putting their kid in their ADU and charging them $200 a month, that's one less person that's looking for an affordable unit in our city or in our collective cities. So giving it to your relatives or to your maid, it's still affordable housing. It's actually the most affordable housing is when you give it to people that you care about and you're subtracting that demand from the rest of us who don't have, let's say, such well-endowed families. The other thing is we really haven't gotten into adaptive reuse. And I hate the way RENA has written the script so that you can't do this and you can't do that and you can't do this. And all they're doing is saying, well, we just want you to maximize the value of your land so more people can speculate on it. Don't even have to build a housing, but you're going to speculate it on the land. And I think that's something that the city really needs to push back on and make an argument, that the RENA and the housing guidelines, the suitable site guidelines, are really bogus and we need to challenge those. So that's basically it. I'm open for questions.
All right. My turn. Again, so much has been said by others that I'm going to try to keep my comments brief and then we can do another round. But I do feel the need, you know, I want to, I think Commissioner Fondabene already brought some clarity to the conversation. And I appreciate that because I think that there are two approaches to what we have to do. And I think I want to say that this is not the Cold War. We are not George Kennan and this is not a housing containment strategy. This is a housing production and preservation plan. It's not a housing prevention plan. And fundamentally, I think that I understand that there are views about policy views that are to a certain degree above our pay grade as to the value of that plan, the purpose of that plan, the ideas behind that plan. And there are concerns about what impact it will have on our cities and our communities as they exist. I, I, I think if we ignore those, we ignore those at our peril. And I think we have to be honest about them, but I think we have to be equally honest about what our role is tonight and in the housing element and as a planning commission and with respect to state law. We are obliged, I believe, to deliver a coherent and intellectually and politically honest housing element to the city council. I think the city council believes that it is obliged to deliver a coherent and intellectually honest housing element to the state. I also think that the city council wants to have a conversation about whether some of those rules don't make sense. And I think that no matter what your view is, whether you are a housing producer, whether you're a housing preserver, whether you're a housing preventer, there are rules that could use a rethink. I think it's, for example, absolutely ridiculous that adaptive reuse doesn't count. I think it's, you know, absolutely ridiculous that, that preventing, you know, that, that we don't get credit for converting a market rate unit to an affordable one or for adding something to the, to the, getting something rent control, right? I think there are, I think there's a wide range in the middle where we could find some common ground, but, but it's, at a certain level, we are, we are where we are. And so I think what we need to focus on is, is getting us and the staff over the finish line of delivering council something that it could be confident that if it adopted, would be accepted by HCD and would fulfill the rules as they exist today. And I think that's, I think that's something to struggle. But I do want to acknowledge that there are a wide range of views and that we are, and that, and that we're in the middle of a very difficult conversation where it seems that, where it seems that we have really significant policy disagreements that we have to work through. A couple of thoughts. I, I'll start with option B. I join colleagues in, in, in supporting option B. I do want to point out, Jing, thank you for doing the overlay where you looked at the, where you looked at the, the risk of gentrification. I think there is a spot on Pico Boulevard where option B identified some housing potential, but it's literally the meat of a sandwich where the bread is housing at the verge, at risk of, of, of conversion or loss. And so I would like us to be careful about that particular yellow, glowing yellow section. But in general, I, I think that we can, we can do a, you know, a surgically precise, take a surgically precise approach to option B. I will echo my colleagues, particularly Vice Chair Pastor and, and Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Reese on the density bonus structure. I, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I think we need to create, go back to my beginning comments, if this is a housing production and preservation plan, an inclusion plan, I think we need to create clear rules that are intelligible, administrable, and, and let's debate them. Let's debate what the scope is. Let's, let's have some conversations about what the density bonus structure looks like, but then once it exists, let's just follow a model that we've seen work somewhere else and is saying, this is, you know, this is Santa Monica, so we have to, you know, we have to make our own special version. Let's, we live in a housing market that is basically a regional one, so let's try to get some regional consistency, at least in the, in the, you know, in the formula, even if, even if the, some of the calculations might be a little bit different. I'm saying that backwards. The, you know, we might have a different percentage bonus or whatever it is, but let's, let's make it, let's make it super clear about what is being laid on top of what and how it's stacking and move on from there. But I do prefer item, if you're asking for a choice, I'm going to land on 2B, which puts the density bonus both on tier one and on tier two, so we can actually get to the housing we need. As far as the affordable housing overlay goes, I, I support it. I support the surgical precision, again, using that metaphor, being very careful. I think one of the other, one of the other considerations has to do with the, with lot size, right? So it's not just that Ocean Park is, I mean, we have to balance these considerations, right? Ocean Park is, A, highly desirable, even though it was redlined, but it also has some of the smallest lots in the city. And we, we, we need to pay attention to what the implications of that are. At the same time, I am concerned about, you know, large parts of Pico and even parts of Pico that are not technically on the, you know, within the, the, within the environmental scan, environment screen area. So, so in terms of the affordable housing overlay, I also think that we want to consider what it means in different neighborhoods. And I'm going to get to the, get to that when we look at the moderate rate housing. So for example, what would it look like, again, as I think Commissioner Lambert said, to prioritize the moderate rate affordability, perhaps through the ADUs, perhaps through other types of moderate rate housing in R1 and R2? I want to suggest in R1, and I think this is a longer conversation, and again, we should lower the, 7,500 square feet should not be the baseline for lot splits. I mean, I think, I think it, 6,000 at, at most, and maybe we should study lower so we know where we land. But I went back to our anti-mansionization work, right? And we looked at a building envelope that says, you take 50% of the, of the lot size, you add an ADU, which the state says can be 1,200 square feet, and you add a 500-square-foot JADUs. So on a 6,000-square-foot lot, forgive my math, I'm just going to do this very quickly, you take 3,000, that's your 50%, you add the 1,200 and the 4,700, that's you take 3000, that's your 50%, you add the 1200 and the 4700, that's what someone could build today, right? So what if we took those 4700 square feet on a 6000 square foot lot and we said, you can build uh, three 1500 square foot units on that lot, um, but you have to do it inside the existing develop, in, inside the existing development standards. As far as somebody walking down the street is concerned, that house, which is, is home to three families, had not looked different from the house next to it that's home to one family. I think, I think that would go a long way to addressing the concerns of, of people who are really, you know, wanting to, they want to keep the trees and they want to keep their neighborhood and they want it, they want to have that sense of living in, in that kind of neighborhood. I think we need to get more creative about that. And what we haven't talked about is how we incentivize people building to the envelope. Because again, what I want to avoid is that situation where we say, well, sure, you can build seven units, but one of them has to be affordable and therefore we get a proposal for five units. And so what I'd like to look at is, do we have the ability to kind of put some caps on maybe a formula that says, okay, if you have a 4700 square foot lot, you, and you build three units on it of 1500 square feet each or 1400 square feet each, we're, we're not going to ding you. But if you decide that you're going to split that lot in half, then we're going to expect some sort of fee payment or some other arrangement, maybe leveraging the ADU to get um, to get something of, to get either affordable dollars or affordable money out of it. Again, we need to workshop this off the dais and, and, and figure that out, but I, I don't want to get into a situation where we are blaming that we're producing, we have the ability to produce all of this uh, affordable housing, but then it never gets built because everybody comes in one or two units below the trigger, the trigger point. We've seen that uh, happen before and I don't want to see it happen again. Um, this leads to the issue that Commissioner Raskin brought up and, and he's right. Single family homeowners, because of the nature of our rent control laws, are at the greatest risk of displacement and I have seen it happen to any member of families at my daughter's school, um, over and over and over again. But one of the reasons that they are so vulnerable, particularly working families, is that there are no housing units for them to go into that they can afford, even if we're talking about two professional incomes, right? Above, they're, they're not uh, AMI, they're, they're like 200% AMI, maybe 250% AMI incomes. The only place, the way they can afford to live in Santa Monica is if they rent a house, putting them at the mercy of a landlord. If we created a middle income housing stock, right? Uh, and that's even, um, you know, President Biden says, nobody making more than $400,000 a year is going to see a tax cut, is going to see a tax hike, right? We, we are in a world in which people who make anywhere from 150 to $400,000 are seen as middle class in this country. Um, we can have a separate conversation about that, but uh, but fundamentally, we don't have housing for people who make that. And if we could provide housing stock by, through, through, through R1 lot splits, we could actually, um, you know, actually provide some options for those families. So I think we need to think about that and, and I, and I believe that that is part of our fair housing obligations. I don't think it's necessarily arena goal, but I think it's a fair housing goal. Um, I, I also would like to see um, uh, senior housing. Um, Ellis, you talked about emergency homeless housing and, and I, what, what, when I was listening to you, what went through my mind was how straightforward it is to um, you know, to try to build that on a congregational site, right? It's values aligned and there's, there's state and county money for that. But the crisis that we're seeing in Santa Monica, day after day after day, are our seniors who are being displaced from their homes. And you're right, we need to expand and pod in order to be able to keep them in their homes. But I think one of the things that we could look at is incentivizing congregations, not just to build 100% affordable, but to build the kind of affordable housing that is responsive to the most vulnerable people in our community who need affordable housing, right? Our seniors, our um, you know, our, our homeless youth, people who, people who really need that kind of housing, um, uh, housing for people with disabilities, I, those are, those are the kinds of housing units that we desperately need in Santa Monica. And um, for a congregation to finance it is both my, you know, C financing is both values aligned and um, and, and something that, that will, that will serve, that will serve our needs, uh, and that will leave the city some flexibility to produce more traditional ELI, DLI, LI housing on the city owned lots. Um, and so I think it's something to think about, like, not just that we need affordable housing, but also that we need um, that what kind of affordable housing we need and where it should be and what kind of community context within which it exists. Um, parking lots, uh, I want to come back to, I just think we had a letter on that, um, and I would just urge staff to attend to the letter's points about uh, the restrictions on parking and let's see if we can open up flexibility on parking uses. Uh, Commissioner, um, uh, Vice Chair Pastor talked about moving to public parking models. I think that's great. We have to see what happens with 1401, um, which will know, I don't know if we're going to know by the time we pass the housing element, but um, in October, but, but that may provide some additional, additional flexibility. Um, homeownership is a tricky one. I would rather expand homeownership opportunities. I would like to see homeownership opportunities expand in general. I think we will move the needle more if we expand the range of home types that are available for purchase across multiple income levels. I think that will both further fair housing and also advance homeownership goals without necessarily displacing people uh, in the way that TORCA tended to do. Um, looking again at our list, um, I mentioned pod, I mentioned the homeless housing, uh, and uh, I, I agree strongly that we need to make ADUs over the counter. Uh, our public commenter wondered why we would deed restrict ADUs and, and, and I think, I think the answer to that is, um, we need to have that conversation. We need to figure out how we would incentivize deed restrictions for ADUs. Um, I remember conversations years ago with um, uh, our now mayor, uh, asking about how we might um, encourage or back stop financing. Uh, could we, could we seek state law changes that would uh, avoid reassessment of ADUs uh, for the time that a property is deed restricted, so you don't get a property tax boost, uh, kind of like a Millsa, a temporary Millsak move? Or um, could we actually subsidize the financing of an ADU, an interest rate subsidy on the financing in exchange for uh, you know, a period of time of deed restriction? And in a way to do that, as Commissioner Reese pointed out, um, do that in such a way that you would deed restrict for a period of time and then if you need to move back into a multi-generational living situation. Imagine somebody in their mid 40s, building the ADU, deed restricting it for 20 years and then, you know, or 25 years, and then coming out of the deed restriction, um, and moving into the back house so that somebody moves into the front house. I think there are, there are a number of conversations that we've talked about where, you know, all of this could feed into the housing element. Um, I'm going a little bit in circles, but I will say, that brings me back to the uh, to the moderate rate housing. Again, uh, Leslie Lambert and I talked about this, I think, two years ago, that our inclusionary programs should lean toward moderate rate housing because that is not a tax increment financeable, um, and so there's no reason that a private developer shouldn't finance it. And we use the city sites, we use the congregational parking lots for 100% affordable and get the ELI and the DLI, DLI. Um, working my way back to the end, 100% on ARV streamlining, um, we will agendize that, we have that agendized, but I agree with Commissioner Fonda Benardi, um, and, and I agree with him as well, that we, we must prioritize and incentivize adaptive reuse. I recognize that that is a, that's going to be an interesting um, path. We cannot put it into our housing element, but I believe if we produce the units, we will then get credit for them having been produced. So um, there is certainly an incentive to uh, accelerate and make easy um, affordable, excuse me, adaptive reuse of, of existing commercials. So um, that is my ramble through our list and um, I'm just not there. A lot, I'd said a lot more than I planned to, but um, let us, uh, let us circle back. Are there other comments?
Yeah, I might be in the minority of one, uh, on the planning commission, but I, I really do want to push back on the um, uh, housing ownership issues that have been, been brought up, um, and, and, yeah, I, I know, I know that, that you all are, are sensitive to uh, the, the impacts of displacements and loss of our, our uniquely valuable rent controlled housing stock. Um, but all that being said, I, I, I think that, that um, you know, we, we really, really uh, have to push back on the idea that, that homeownership in and of itself is an intrinsic uh, value. Uh, you know, look, if people are paying 50% of their income for housing, people don't care if you own your place or you rent it. Uh, the fact matters is that, uh, we just need to be focused on bringing down rent burdens and, and finding opportunities for preserving whatever rent controlled stock we still have. And I, I, I am uh, deeply concerned that um, going down a path towards uh, uh, TORCA 2.0 is going to simply incentivize LS activations and uh, pushing people out of their homes in a way that's going to be kind of productive.
Well, I, you're not a minority of one. I, I'm not, I'm, I, you're, maybe you and I are a minority of two. I, I'm arguing that, that moving toward, the best way to move toward housing ownership, housing ownership is to diversify, is to allow lot splits and diversify access to homeownership that way because at the end of the, end of the day, the value, I mean, there is, as, as Commissioner Fresco pointed out, the, the real redlining now is, and Commissioner Lambert as well, the real, the real redlining is in the um, racial wealth gap. That's where the, that's where the wealth gap is. And in this country, the primary way to accumulate wealth is through homeownership. Um, and we have barriers to homeownership in our city. So I don't want to turn a rent controlled unit into a condo. I don't think that's right, but I do not have a problem taking a 6000 square foot parcel and within appropriate development standards, making that into three 1500 square foot parcels that somebody then can, can then get into and, and hopefully pass on to another generation. Um, if we were to live in a society where that wasn't the main way of, you know, building wealth and ensuring security from generation to generation, uh, we might be having a different conversation. Housing in Vienna is amazing, um, but that's not the society, like, that's, that's not the world we're in at the moment. Yeah.
Well, if, if I can just respond quickly, I mean, my, 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 my next concern then is, is uh, how lot splits are going to impact uh, evictions in, in R1 neighborhoods for the people who do rent there. I mean, to your point about people, people who are really on the, on the brink in our city, uh, you, you know, who are, are families, you know, who have children who are being pushed out of their homes. Um, you know, I think, you know, to the extent that it's allowed on, under the, the uh, nuances of, of uh, the existing rent control laws, um, you know, we need to figure out how to keep those people in their homes.
Yes, and I'm curious whether the Housing Accountability Act, the SB 330 protections would be deemed to extend to that, that group of individuals. That would be very interesting. Commissioner Fonda Benardi.
Yeah, and just to second that, preserving existing housing stock, we really need to look at, if you rolled out a 9,000 unit construction program over eight years, you're going to demolish a lot of existing units, which then would have to be replaced in the no net loss, and you're also going to demolish a lot of businesses, particularly small business and one story buildings. How many of those you can demolish? You can demolish according to the city, the equivalent to three times Santa Monica Place. That's a lot of businesses we're flushing down the drain. They're not coming back. And so what I'm saying is everything we do in adaptive use is a way of preserving, not having to demolish something else. And it's a powerful tool because it also, what it does is it helps us in our housing job imbalance. It increases the housing and it reduces the job. And so you're bringing those things more in line with only doing half the work as opposed to doing twice the work, which is just building all the new units, but you're still stuck with the job overload. So what I'm saying is we, we want to do stuff that's good for our city and not stuff necessarily that is good for an imaginary future that Rena has cooked up for us. That's the problem. That's really a problem in a nutshell.
Yeah, the jobs you're taking away are, I mean...
They may have already left. They have already gone.
A bunch of them have left, but I also think that we want to be careful about not completely eviscerating our economic base.
No, no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that in building the 9,000 units, you are going to be eviscerating some of your installed, how, installed business and, and that's going to cost you something.
Yeah. Well, those are the, I mean, and the same thing with the thing, with the lot splits, right? I mean, you, you, how do you get to the availability of subdivided smaller units without the loss of the existing, I mean, it, it, that is, that's the challenge of, once you've made the policy, how do you protect as many people as you can as along the way of getting to your desired future? Uh, hope that we're helping more people than we hurt, you know?
Well, that's why I was saying they shouldn't be lot splits. They, can't say that word. Lot splits, they should be building splits and that people who live in a home can decide, oh, I'm gonna remodel my home and turn it into a duplex. And so it would be more like a condo program. And when you say lot split, that's a huge change to a neighborhood and the character and the way it looks and trees go down and fences go up and it's a nightmare. And I think that lot split is part of...
You're right.
...as a term.
That's a better word.
And what we're really talking about is unit splits and additional units, but I think we really need to keep that burdened neighborhood character as it is because I think it's a huge asset in our park poor city, so.
And it preserves this, and, and to our anti-mansionization efforts, it preserves, if you preserve that character of that building, okay, it has three front doors, but you know, it's one building. Yeah.
It probably already has three doors.
Yeah. Well, a single family home will have three front doors. I mean, you'll have a JADU door, you'll have a detached ADU door and you'll have a, and you'll have a, have a main door. We've already been told they can't connect to each other.
Right. My house, of course, has two front doors, even though it's one house, so go for it.
Okay. Jim?
No, you guys have talked this one through. I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, Jing, do you have what you need for the next round? Have we lost her?
I think she wants us to talk longer.
Yeah. How, how have we covered the bases? You're muted again. No, I think it's with the headphones. I think your headphone mic isn't working. You're still muted. Try unplugging your headphones from the computer. There you go. Yeah. Nope. Still not. Nope.
Gives us a thumbs up if we've given her enough information.
There you go. Yes, she's good. Good to go. Okay. All right. Rachel, you're good to go.
Yes, I believe we've got everything. Thank you very much.
All right, well, look, um, really, thank you again. I know this has been a lot and uh, we really appreciate you opening the oven and uh, taking out the cake to see if it's baked. I think you've heard a wide range of opinions, but um, I hope that you've been, I hope that some of our input has, has given you a sense of where we want to go and um, maybe some of the approaches that uh, could help get there. Um, and uh...
But it doesn't have the same bad effect it would have if you opened the oven while you were baking a cake.
That's right. That's right. Exactly. Uh, and I want to remind members of the public, um, we will continue to have a brief housing element on our agenda through the 2nd of June. Um, so if you want us to hear something, send us a note for May 19th and we'll plug it in. Um, we will be, we will be hearing the draft housing element. I think this is worth saying as a wrap up to anybody who's still listening four hours later, four and a half hours later. On June 2nd, the staff plans to deliver, to present the draft housing element. They will release it at some point before then, so we'll have a... They will release it at some point before then, so we'll have a chance to all read it. Public comment, the press, staff presentation, commission questions and public comment will take place on the evening of Wednesday, June 2nd. We will then have a special commission meeting on Thursday, June 3rd for our discussion of the item, but there will not be public comment that night. There will be public comment. I believe we agree that there would be public comment on June 2nd. And that way we can just jump into the conversation on the 3rd. It'll be one hearing broken up overnight. After that, staff will bring, take our consideration, our, our, our adjustments into consideration and bring the, the, bring the, the element to the city council in June. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that the story does not end there. The draft housing element after council approves it will be sent to Sacramento for its review. And we hope that we will get a positive result from the review. And then it will come back to the planning commission in September for one more round, and somebody else will be chair by then. And then it will go back up to the city council for final approval, and then the housing element will be adopted. The deadline is, I believe, October 1st for a certified housing element, if I'm not mistaken. And with that, let me just take a look. We do not have written communicate, well, Commissioner Lambert shared an article with us on adaptive reuse, so I just want to acknowledge that for the record, under written communications, we do not have any callers for public input. And unless anybody else has anything urgent to say, we can call it an evening. Great. Thanks, everyone. See you on the 19th. Take care.